Welcome, everybody, to our pre-meeting, January twenty second, two thousand twenty four. I'll go around and ask if City Council has any agenda questions or anything before we hit the dais tonight?
Yes, Mayor, Levon Huckfer of the, he's the Deputy Executive Director of Adams County Health Department. He just joined. He would like to build relationships with council and wants to come in for a future spring or summer study session to talk about the new health department that was created there. So we're asking for permission for a presentation.
We can work it.
Okay. My only thought is Jeffco, since we have two counties.
Yeah, we can do.
Do, do both.
So everybody on the council.
Is that okay?
Okay with that?
And it's whenever you run the big calendars, so whenever it all works. Anything else?
I, you know, I have a question. So we have a meeting with CDPHE coming up in the future. Is there any way that we can make that more accessible to residents as far as asking questions?
It's a study session and there are generally no questions during study session.
Can we?
I, I think we could ask if the, if the public contacts counselors with questions, that might be a way for counselors to then carry those questions forward into study session.
Okay.
Because, you know, part of our conversation was is that it's a study session, so there is, you know, there's no formal public comment, public hearing kind of opportunity. And so that's kind of what we set it up as, but I think that would be a way for the community, if they have questions, to walk through counselors.
Okay, all right. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Elfrid Carmelio?
I have some updates, but I think I can save those for next week on some meetings I attended. But I was asked to testify on a bill and it's on a topic that's very close to my heart personally, which is, it's on rights for foster youth and children in foster care. And that is happening Wednesday and I will be representing myself, but I'm bringing it up in case there's any questions or concerns.
Do you know what the bill is? Is it something, I mean, that's an area that I have thoughts on. So if it's a bill that we could get information on, maybe you could get support from other ones of us?
That would be fantastic.
If you could share that, maybe if our staff has anything on the particular bill?
Yeah, we can ask staff for extra information. I do have a law on it and I can forward that. It's a bill creating, a bill of rights essentially for abused and neglected kids in foster care. They don't have already, believe it or not, essential rights. So this would provide that.
Followed issue, so I probably would, I'd like to see it because I would at least be willing to lend my name to it if it's something that follows what I think.
That's fantastic. Thank you. I'll forward what I have.
Councilor Adrien? I went to the Imagine Clinic's open house on, oh, was it Friday last week? Anyway, very impressed with the facility. It's for adolescents thirteen to seventeen, private. They own, they take insurance and some Medicaid. They can take twenty-two youth at a time. Really nice facility. The people that run it are from Omaha, so it was like a reunion for me. The gals went to my high school, so it was a really great experience and it's a great facility for youth. And I guess they're going to open up the adults side in a couple of months, so.
And did you have any questions for tonight?
Nope.
Councilor Demont?
No questions for tonight.
Mayor Protem?
I had questions for tonight. They were focused on the RMMA CNR. So I was wondering if those questions could be just asked during, it was really just that one question of what were the, what, what has the CNR, what improvements has it brought? And so I was wondering if staff could just respond to it when we actually hit that on the agenda?
And we can, and we did respond to you, so you saw that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and council reports. Councilor Zadi? Councilor Hudd?
Yeah, I, I attended the Metzger Farm for the first time. The mayor can probably expand on that a little bit more than I can, but yeah, it's a farm that Westminster and Brumfield co-fought because we wanted to, to save that land. So people, it's over a hundred eight, a hundred, a hundred twenty-five acres?
It cost a hundred and sixty, isn't it?
It's over a hundred acres.
It's over a hundred.
And, and, yeah, and so we couldn't do it on our own, so we worked together. And so now we're just taking care of the land and, and the buildings there. The main house needs some improvements. The buildings need to be repainted. And so we're, we're taking care of the upkeep. And so that was my, my first meeting and it was.
And she got elected as secretary.
Yeah, yeah. And the secretary, so yeah, that was great. And then I also, I attended the ten-year anniversary for the Chamber of Commerce. That was at the Butterfly Pavilion, a really great venue. It's great to see the butterflies be released and got to touch some starfish and snails. And so, yeah, that was really fun, a really fun event, so, yeah.
Yes, I attended Dr. Cog, which Mayor Protemna Marilla was also there, so didn't need to be, but I took your advice. And like you said, it was quite informative. I'm so glad I went. We discussed the Strategic Growth Bill, the Inflation Reduction Act funding that's available. And so I will let Mayor Protem update further, but it was really great. I also attended the North Metro Arts Alliance meeting and that was very exciting. We discussed all the successful programs that happened in December, Santa's Workshop, a few other items. We discussed Arts Week. We discussed the upcoming plans for Movies in the Park and Neighbor Nights. And so that's all very exciting. Most of the items we discussed are still in draft form, so more to come there. And then as far as CML, I did sign up for that. I found out after receiving those calendar invites that so far all the meetings are during business hours. And I did attempt to attend the one on Friday anyway. I tried to get out of work and it didn't happen. I had an escalation at work, so I wasn't able to attend. And so I'm kind of putting this out there now that I didn't realize that all of these meetings are going to be during business hours. And I, I recommend someone else taking this on, and if that's not possible, I'll do what I can. Thanks.
Sorry, I went out of order. I already explained where I went. And also I went to the Chamber of Commerce for the celebration, which was very nice. That's all I have.
Councilor Demont?
I don't believe we've met since I had inclusivity. And so there were a couple of things that came out of that. They had questions around transportation for seniors. And I know that's been a topic that we talked about with the former service that we used, and that actually came up in their conversation. So one thing I wanted to follow up with is we had talked about potential grants or something or using that money in a different way to still provide rides for those folks and the service that RTD has. And I don't, if we, there was a follow-up, I don't remember, but I, if that's something we could follow up, I could share back with that group. That would be great because I know that's something that council asked about during budget. And then also out of that, they talked about, they kind of had an open discussion about what they were going to do this next year. And so how they could participate in different meetings and potentially with other boards. And so there are two things I wanted to report back. One was about bringing Senior Resource Center in. I made an introduction to them, to their director. I used to be on that board. It's a great organization. I know the city does partner with them at some level and they do a lot of those services from transportation to things for seniors inside their homes, allowing them to age in place. So I thought that was a good connection. I also think at some point it would be a good connection and maybe a bigger discussion around seniors for council. And I know that the city manager's office sent that invite to everybody so that you could go participate when he, Chris Lynn comes and speaks to the inclusivity. I would highly recommend it. If you don't know about that organization, they're, you know, really good at what they do and they serve a lot of the Jeffco side of the North Metro area, so. And then the other thing that they talked about that I just want to at least get on our radar and maybe we don't have an opinion one way or another, but since the boards do work at our discretion, they have, and they've done this in the past, they've talked a lot about going to work with other boards. I don't necessarily think that that's, you know, good, bad, or, or other. But I do think that if we're going to start, we've talked about giving some better direction, you know, maybe that's something that we figure out how we want them to interact with each other since they are our boards. You know, there are only a limited amount of ones that they probably could work with just because of the quasi judicial ones besides maybe attending and listening. I don't know, you know, what, how they could help. But, you know, I wanted to at least bring that thought back to you guys because I thought about it after their discussion. And if anybody has any issues, it might be something that we talk about as a group. And then lastly, they again reiterated their desire as we go down the path of, of the words and districts conversation about us reaching out to all our boards, including them, on how they might be able to participate in those conversations, however it makes sense.
Well, just want to, for the via transit, that I would love a follow-up. And if there is a way through, if we have some additional carryover that's coming from the two thousand twenty-three budget, that if we could look at that and see if we can fund via transit this year. At the same time, I did mention that the RTD partnership grants, they're doubling their amount this year. So I would hope that that's something that we would apply to so that we could potentially get that funded or at least partially funded through that grant. But that's not right now. I think it's later, maybe in the summer or something. So, anyway, and, and if it just serves for something for the two thousand twenty-five, but if we could figure out a solution for two thousand twenty-four, I'd love to hear that. I also want to hear more about how we can partner with other senior organizations, including the ones that, you know, the Senior Resource Center, so definitely support that. Get another, oh, and then with respect to the other advisory boards working together, if there's a, a project that they could partner on, I think, you know, to identify what it is and then just how the two of them would interact or support one another, who's in charge, just some clear parameters around, and maybe it's project-based or.
Yeah, I guess my, my thought has been for a long time how we help, you know, help them by giving them direction. So maybe it's something that the staff liaisons could talk with each other from the different boards and think of ways that they can help task them with stuff. And I, I, I guess the, the challenge has been with a couple of them that are not quasi judicial is they, often I've heard the concern that they're just not getting anything done or they don't feel like there's, you know, they serve purpose. And so, you know, maybe us helping provide some purpose around their area that they're passionate about would make sense.
Yeah, I'd love to have, you know, if we were able to have a conversation about that, maybe on the study session, you know, bring it back up. And then I'll try and do a quick overview of the Dr. Cog meeting in particular since this had, only has three percent left on my notes. Okay, so, and go. So we, we had the governor's office come in and present to us on the bills that are coming through with respect to the Strategic Growth Bill, ADUs and ADU financing and the TOC, the Transit Oriented Center bill. And the Strategic Growth Bill is, and I don't know if we're going to be having some more conversation about these bills with our legislative reps, but the Strategic Growth Bill, I think, is very similar to what Prop two thirteen had in it last year, essentially providing local housing needs plans and doing some long-range planning. I don't think it's overly cumbersome. ADUs, I'm excited that they are trying to find ways that we can potentially get those financed better. So I think that's a so far so good element. The TOC bill, which is a Transit Oriented Center, we would definitely be an impacted community because we have some transit areas that would qualify as their TOCs. I think the only place that I feel, there, there's two aspects that folks had issues. One was that if we don't, so everybody would have a housing opportunity goal. That would be, I'm not sure exactly how that's identified, maybe through the regional housing assessment that Dr. Cog would be doing. But each community would have their HOG. And through that, you'd have to meet the HOG by zoning for those units to be met in a transit-oriented center. And they're trying to provide some flexibility, but I think it's still a little too restrictive. But that's just my op- opinion on how they're identifying these transit-oriented centers. I think there, some more work needs to be done. If you don't meet your housing opportunity goal, i.e. by zoning areas where it could be accommodated, then you would have the, the federal transportation funds held back from your community. Honestly, I feel, I, I mean, we haven't done the calculation. I'd be interested to have staff kind of evaluate where we would currently sit with this bill. We, we could meet it just based on our current zoning. So it may not, you know, for us, it may not be as big of an issue for other communities. So, but a lot of people were concerned about those transportation funds being held back. There's a lot of interest in, you know, with the ADU bill to just have some understanding of what all the requirements would be, where they would be, or how they would be required in pretty suburban contexts where you don't have alleys and things like that. So questions came up. And the other concern I had in the TOC bill was just that, again, when we have these transit-oriented centers, do we have the flexibility to meet our housing goals in a myriad of ways? So I think we've done a pretty good job as a city to identify our transit centers, work with those, zone. So, but they have this requirement for a minimum density of somewhere between forty and sixty units city acre. I don't, that's, that's a number that's not equally contextually appropriate for every community. So that's just what I would love to see them massage. Trying to see what else was kind of. I can send my notes because there's so many. Though, oh, one other thing for this. They did go over a couple of bill positions. One that I, and I abstained from the two that we had, although I think it probably goes with our legislative agenda. The state funding for senior services, there is, I don't know if you all recall, but they, there's no longer going to be ARPA funds coming in and really amplifying our senior service for this, for the state. And so they're going to be going back to twenty nineteen, pre twenty nineteen levels of funding. And it's just going to be very impactful to the services that we are currently enjoying. And so this bill is asking for an additional five million dollars plus an inflation factor. So Dr. Cog did support that as a whole. I think we would probably too. There's another bill that came up, the Senior Housing Income Tax Credit. It's focused on low and moderate income senior households for, that are over the age of sixty-five, providing up to a thousand dollars for single and two thousand dollars for dual-person households. And so Dr. Cog supported that one. One that's coming in the next realm, because this bill is still being drafted, is an emergency funding for disruption of services. And this is, I don't know if you all recall seeing the Meals, Meals on Wheels being disrupted. The nonprofit went out and for Adams County. And so this bill is trying to create a bit of a reserve fund for those types of kind of emergencies to fill a gap and maintain a level of service. So that's coming next month. And I don't know if, maybe if, once we get it drafted, you guys want to take a look at it and, I mean, are you in general supportive of something like that, depending on how it's being funded? It's, the Department of Human Services would be able to essentially just backstop those.
There's a good report on the TV the other night.
And RTD says they are looking on a totally different topic. There's multiple RTD-funded, I think, bills that are coming through for a lot of free fairs. They're also looking at free fairs for nonprofits. And they'll have more detail on that next week, which Counselor Carmelia is going to be filling in for me next month. So we'll get the report. Good to know.
With RTD, with what both of you said, we really need to let, like Covenant Village, what's the one at one hundred and twelfth and federal? Anyway, any of those kinds of places, they need to know especially about the senior fair. No senior will pay over twenty-seven dollars a month for wherever they want to go in the system of RTD. And I think that, that is such a huge difference. Folks may not have gotten that. And just putting it out on Facebook isn't going to get to everybody. So maybe getting to the actual places that have our seniors would be helpful. So I think that's a critical piece. I attended, most of these were via Zoom because the doctor said that's what I could do. But went to the Metzger Farm Foundation meeting and it is a hundred and forty-seven acres. Northwest Mayors and Commissioners had a meeting and I sent out a piece that they're looking at for agreement on. And I said after tonight's meeting, I would give a year or name. Haven't heard from folks. So look at your email, make sure you've seen it, and tomorrow I'll give them a year or name. Mile High Flood District, we've got a piece of that that has been working for a while, but is in the works for this year. So heard all of the pieces that are going to be involved in the Mile High Flood District. We had the town hall. It was a packed house. It was a great meeting. I had the native pre-meeting this last Friday. I become the chair this coming Friday for that organization. And the chamber event was wonderful. And ten years is hard to believe, but there, here we are. So anything else from anybody? Do you have anything?
Real quick, Mayor?
Yeah.
I forgot to mention that I went to two, two meetings. One was the Jefferson County Transportation Forum and the other was Parks and Rec. And I sent out the reports to you. But the Parks and Rec one was interesting. I sent a question to the city manager. I, I know you responded. I don't think I've read it yet on the cliff. So the membership cliff that's happening, half the board will roll out in the next two years and the other half in the next two years after that. So we need to figure something out to make it more smooth.
Right.
Yes.
Just for historical knowledge, when they, when they made that change, because it didn't used to be where you would get termed out, the concern was that we had such a big pool of people at the time that people weren't getting cycled out and people were staying a long time, which is good and bad. And so then, call it COVID or whatever, the pool has shrunk drastically over the last four years. So I don't think that was an anticipated thing when they changed that probably in, gosh, when did, twenty sixteen, maybe?
I think they said like six, seven years ago.
Yeah. But I did, I did want to ask, do we give them an opportunity though to go to a different board, right? So they don't, they just get termed out at that board, so.
Correct. And we are also working on a code cleanup that says that if there's no one to replace the person, then, then it, it'll stay filled until vacant, basically. And the other thing that will address specifically parks is that is really the most popular board. That's the one we get the most applications for. So I would be very surprised if that board was ever half-empty.
Yeah, I think the, the biggest risk was the lack, was the loss of the institutional knowledge of the folks that have been there for so long. So if we had a smoother rollout, then we can at least minimize that risk.
Anything else? See everybody at seven. Are we ready to go? Welcome to tonight's meeting of January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the City of Westminster City Council meeting for January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted at the back of the room. These rules are in effect while our meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want you to feel, be sure you all feel welcome. And remind all, there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and threats and intimidation are prohibited. Signs and placards are prohibited in council chambers, and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles, nor shall the doorways be blocked. Could we have a roll call, please? Councilor Carmelia.
Present.
Councilor Demott.
Present.
Councilor Azadi.
Here.
Councilor Haib.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Present.
Mayor Protem Nermela.
Here.
And Councilor Ireland.
Present.
That brings us to the minutes of January eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Councilor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the January eighth, twenty twenty-four meetings as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of January eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to public comment. The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the city council. Each participant will be given no more than five minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. If there is a public hearing scheduled for the item on which you wish to speak, please hold your comments and testify when that public hearing is called. Tonight, there are no public hearings on the agenda. This evening, the city clerk has informed me that we received eight emails by the deadline, which have been posted on the online agenda packet and forward directly to the city council, and five voicemails, which will be played back after our live speakers have concluded with their remarks. City clerk, would you please call our first speaker? The first speaker we have is, I'm sorry, Scott Wilms. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Scott Wilmes. I represent, or I'm here to represent for the one hundred and twenty-eight members of your Westminster Professional Firefighters, IAFF Local Two-Eight-Eight-Nine. I serve as their Secretary Treasurer. In two thousand seventeen, when City Westminster leadership and representatives from Local Two-Eight-Eight-Nine worked together in developing our collective bargaining ordinance, the concepts of collective bargaining and especially interest-based bargaining were new to us all. Since this, council has passed the ordinance in focus tonight. We have come together to successfully develop three collective bargaining agreements, strengthen our relationship time and time again, and continue to work together to solve new challenges as they emerge. The original ordinance continues to serve our city, but over time, they have encountered certain constraints in the way of timelines, scheduling, and procedural matters that were not foreseen at its creation. The changes to the ordinance as presented tonight will allow greater flexibility for the city and its firefighters to collaborate on future collective bargaining agreements and better align with schedules outside of our control while maintaining the spirit and timeliness that was originally intended. The firefighters of Local Two-Eight-Eight-Nine are in full support of these proposed changes and ask for council's continued support tonight and for our future together. On behalf of your firefighters, thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sharon Harrison. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Sharon Harrison. I am representing the Lexington HOA board. I'm here tonight to discuss some of the challenges that we have in our neighborhood that are really very difficult. When we look at the amenities that are available for families that live on the north side of our city, we see that really there are no amenities for us. We're seven point six miles from the nearest rec center. There are four rec centers in other cities that we are much closer to. In our neighborhood, our one healthy amenity is our trail system, which, when our neighborhood was built, it was built as a private trail system. It has become part of the citywide trail system. In the city of Westminster, there are one hundred and twenty miles of trails. There are forty-seven thousand households that support those trails. In our neighborhood, we maintain almost a mile worth of that trail, and there are one hundred and twenty-six homes. This has become unbearable for us. We are looking at replacing one, zero point one eight miles of that trail at a cost of almost a hundred thousand dollars. That's a thousand dollars almost per household for us. It's not manageable. We have in our ODP the fact that this was built as a horse trail slash bike path. It's currently asphalt that we're looking at that's deteriorated over twenty-five years. The replacement for concrete or asphalt is over a hundred thousand dollars. Because of the way the city has developed, of course, there's lots of neighborhoods around Lexington now. There's not just Lexington people on these trails. There are people from Broomfield. There's people from Huntington, all the different neighborhoods. The local Montessori kids come up on our trail and play in our open space. It says in our ODP, if at a future date the pathway would have become connected to a regional public pathway, then the homeowners association could deed that pathway in easement free of charge to the city. And, and at the city's option, and thereafter, the city could maintain that pathway. And I'm here tonight to ask you to consider that. You know, we are in a well-off neighborhood, and maybe to some people, that's like, okay, it's not that much money. The other thing that we are tasked with is the liability of this path. So accidents go to our insurance and we pay for it, which is totally inappropriate for something that is managed and, and put on your citywide trail system. We had a slip and fall last year. We have gone from paying thirty-five hundred dollars a year for our insurance to twelve thousand eight hundred dollars annually. The other big thing that we pay for in our neighborhood that has become quite onerous is thirteen acres of open space. And in our ODP, that was to have been seeded with buffalo grass. And whoever was in charge of making sure that that happened did not do that thirty-five years ago, because we have Kentucky bluegrass. And it is costing us forty thousand dollars plus a year to keep it just alive. Not green, just alive. So we are working, and I want to thank several people at the city for working with me on this. In particular, city planning, parks and recs. John Van has worked for years with me. Drew Beckworth has worked for years with us. Stephanie, can I get her name right? Stephanie Asherman? Ashman. So we're working on that problem, but we don't have the ability financially to solve all of these problems. And so I'm coming tonight to say to you that, you know, we are working as a community to, to work with you, but this path is simply not something that we can afford. From my house, if I'm not talking about our path around Lexington, I am zero point seven one miles from Westminster Trail. So other than the trail that I personally pay for with one hundred and twenty-five of my neighbors, I'm not that close to anything. So, you know, that's my plea to the city council tonight, is consider how you guys can partner with us. I think it's time that you think about taking this trail over. It's used by lots of people. So thank you for your time and consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. City manager, somebody will get back to her. The next speaker is Dan Rose. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm here with Sharon and some of my other neighbors to reiterate. Sharon did a very good job at articulating the challenges we have in Lexington. From my perspective, I have a rescue. I walk the trails at least one day, one day a week, or one, one time per day in the, in the wintertime and twice in the summer. From my perspective, the lion's share of the people that are using our trails are not Lexington homeowners. And so we're having to fund a very, very nice amenity in the area, but it really connects the other neighborhoods. And unless somebody wants to walk to and from, if they really want to make a circle path, they have to go through our neighborhood. And so we're supporting a much larger community than just the Lexington homeowners. The second thing that concerns me is, is asking, you know, for governance. The, the trails are used by non-Lexington homeowners. The kids are riding e-bikes, e-scooters, and even gas-powered motorcycles on these trails. And so we need some help in governance of inspecting for that type of behavior. And an HOA really can't enforce much in that area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dennis Kessler. Welcome.
So I've been a long-term, one of the original homeowners in Lexington. And over thirty years ago, when I moved into Lexington, I remember, I did concrete for forty years and had a concrete business. So I remember seeing the asphalt path being installed, and it was pretty much dumped, rolled out, and that was it. Average lifespan of asphalt is twenty-five years. We've, we've far surpassed that time. The cost-effectiveness would be for concrete in that path. You know, City of Broomfield took over our south pass, and on the south path, that is the nicest part of our whole path. They maintain it. They do snow removal. And on our path, we have volunteers that clean out the poop stations for the dogs. To me, that's unacceptable. As far as I'm concerned in this path, if we can't seek help or gain help from City of Westminster, this path, as it was earlier stated, was a horse path or horse trail in the original ODP. I'd just soon have this asphalt taken out and make it a, another drainage area as it was originally proposed. I, I would not like to pay a thousand dollars for this path when more people use it than the people of Lexington. And I appreciate your time in thinking about that part, but I would really like to just take it out, lower our insurance rate, lower our maintenance. It would be all easier on us. And if we can do that, that's what I'm going to advocate to every homeowner in Lexington. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charlene Wiley. Welcome.
I have a handout that I think the clerk will distribute. It would be helpful to have that in as I speak so that she can kind of follow along some of this stuff. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. Why leave the Community Noise Roundtable for RMMA? One, lack of reliable information. The CNR is an FAA design process that allows affected communities to advise only on the issues of noise from an airport. The issues are complex and require interpretation of FAA regulation. We have ample evidence that Jeffco has negotiated in bad faith by engaging in an active campaign designed to subvert timely presentation of factual and other relevant data that CNR members need to deal constructively with solutions. There's no accomplishments in forty-six months of existence. The CNR has had its inaugural meeting in March of two thousand twenty. The CNR has had its inaugural meeting in March of 2020. Members did not make progress with solutions of any kind until September of '23, when new voluntary patterns for overnight traffic only were added to the airport's voluntary noise abatement procedures. It would be hard to think of this solution as an accomplishment for the CNR because the airport's noise abatement procedures have been posted for many years and have had no noticeable impact on pilot behavior. Although these changes received more attention, the effect is basically equivalent to a suggestion on the bulletin board in the lunchroom. CNR members went on to claim compliance with these suggestions. However, those claims lack credibility because the air traffic control tower that provides reliable data on the number of flights and other important information is closed overnight. These changes actually inflict greater harm on Westminster residents to protect superior communities. The CNR's purpose is for change on more fundamental matters such as FAA-approved flight patterns, policy matters like curfews, landing fees, and other things that would substantially change the impact on surrounding communities. Lack of trust and functionality. John Bauer, the FAA representative at the CNR, discussed the substantial review process required for proposed route adjustments and asked for CNR members to commit to a subcommittee for this. CNR members failed to pass a resolution for this review, fearing that it lacked the transparency required for fundamental fairness for all affected communities. This effectively blocks any action on a proposal that the CNR has paid a consultant over $52,000 to develop. Clearly, CNR members have no faith or trust in this process. Inability to deal with significant matters of public health and community concern. Despite grave concerns that have been brought forth by community members for many years, the CNR has refused to deal with the growing problem of lead-microparticulate pollution from piston-engine aircraft. Most of these flights, this flight school traffic is recreational and has no impact on the so-called pilot shortage. Estimates of lead emissions from our RMMA now exceed 3,000 pounds annually. Studies clearly show the lifetime harm that this exposure is creating for our children. Community members have pleaded with the CNR to take up this issue, as well as other ongoing environmental damage from airport activities, including PFAS and other groundwater contamination to Stanley Lake, the increasing medical care costs associated with noise, decline in property values from these environmental harms, et cetera. The CNR response has been that these matters are outside their scope, resulting in no action on grave concerns. I have attended every CNR meeting since its inception in March of 2020, and I'll tell you what drives me. Mostly, it's because of what happens to a child when that sustains a lifelong injury. My own daughter is a disabled adult. I lived the life. Not only are such injuries devastating to the individual, they impact the entire family. My parenting duties will continue until the day I die. And the costs for special education, medical care, and the supports required for my daughter to be able to continue her life are staggering. Most of that is paid for with public funds. My own health has been affected. My blood lead level is severely elevated, and I have developed other medical conditions that track like a case study from the NIH study I used to analyze increased costs of healthcare for people like me who live near airports like RMMA. I repeatedly offered this information to the council, the CNR, and other public officials. The analysis showed that increased healthcare costs alone exceeded the so-called $700 million impact of RMMA. So the only responsible action you can take tonight is to vote yes on the resolution to leave the CNR. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis, I'm sorry. The next speaker is Bruce Baker. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, people. On Thursday, I tried to ask a question at the town hall. I've already sent to every council member an email in which I urged them to really consider rejecting the consulting contract the executive director of WETA made with the Laramie Company. First, though, let me address the email I received from Mayor Nancy McNally concerning her acknowledged censoring of my question during the Westminster Town Hall last Thursday. Town halls are the only public venue in which residents can interact with members. No other council meetings allow public interaction. Even my comments tonight are only a one-way conversation. Mayor McNally deprived me of a chance to interact with council in public. Is the mayor going to rectify the harm she did to me? What really message am I supposed to take from the mayor's conduct? I already know her intense hatred of me. She made that very clear when she joined in really censuring me last year for telling the truth. I imagine she still has some measure of guilt from that cowardly and vicious action. And while not forgetting, I have moved beyond that, and I urge her to do the same. Of deflecting more harm to like a person you have already unjustly hurt does not heal anyone, including yourself. So now, let's go to the Laramie Company, and I will begin by asking the censored question. So will you, acting as the WETA board, reverse the contract with Laramie and Company? Well, the old WETA board, which I was a member of, gave no guidance to our really executive director about contracts with the Laramie Company that, well, expired on December 31st, 2023. And when, well, the principal of Laramie Company died last year, I brought up the subject of the then-existing contracts. Our old board took no action. A curious thing to think, a dead person can really fulfill an exclusive contact, contract to interact with the board and sell property. Your new WETA board has never met, but your executive director has made major decisions without you. But far worse than of the usurping, you're really prerogatives, he has made a foolish choice. Well, the Laramie and Company has done a terrible job for the city of Westminster. Look at the results. Well, the new downtown lost ground, lost progress last year. There were the major failures of Schnitzer and of Marzak. There is a failed bookstore there. There is a promised but never-delivered food court, and there are vacant shops everywhere. Well, the city spent millions of dollars on roads we don't need, Benton Street, and plans on spending millions more subsidizing residential projects and giving money to their friends. Did you know that there's a single-family lot for sale up at Kara Estates? 0.2 acres for $335,000. And WETA sold the entire C7 block, 1.5 acres, 31 home sites, for $335,285. Worse still, few of the projects in the downtown will really provide, well, the sales tax that runs this city. You, as the WETA board, are the only way, the only authority to stop this waste and corruption. You owe a duty to the people of Westminster. There is over $100 million of taxpayer money at risk at the new downtown. The WETA board needs to hear different points of view than, well, the usual rainbows and unicorns that really city staff offers. I offer my six years of counsel in WETA experience and 10 years of study of URAs and of the unique situation in Westminster to, like, assist you.
Councilor Baker, your time is up.
Sorry. I do have handouts.
The next speaker is Kara Spangler. Welcome.
Hey, I'm Kara Spangler, and I too am part of the Lexington subdivision and a proponent of exercise. I use that path as Dan daily, going very long distances. And I got to tell you, that path needs some work, and it is utilized by, you know, I go to Legacy a lot, and a lot of the Legacy kids are on that path. They're coming and going to and from school. They're going to see their friends in Lambert or in the Huntington Trails. And everybody is utilizing it to get up to McKay, the lake. We all love our lake. Boy, those paths are utilized by everybody using that lake. So honestly, we do need to have the city pick this up. It is something that not just the Lexington folks are utilizing. And it's so dang important to get out there and exercise and have a facility, which is our outdoor paths, that are safe, right? As I age, I do now have to look down and make sure I don't go into one of the big holes. And there are plenty of them on that side of the path. And as they said, it's a shame, I got three dogs, and I can't get to a trash can that I know is going to be maintained. Our people in Lexington had to put out a pail to put the poop in, and someone's got to pick it up. So it's time for the city to take this little bit of cash and take care of that path for us because it is something that the city of Westminster is using. That's all I got.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Lambo. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you. It's good to be in front of you in Westminster as well. I'm here to pray for the city of Westminster, but I want to begin tonight by reminding everyone that words matter and choice of words matter. On September 17, 1787, Elizabeth Willing Powell asked this question of Benjamin Franklin. "Well, doctor, what have we got, republic or monarchy?" Franklin responded, "A republic if you can keep it." He knew something. And we have a republic, a constitutional republic, to be exact. We just pledge allegiance to the republic, and it matters. Although if you listen to our politicians, our news media, or educators, more often than not, you hear them say, "We have a democracy." And there's a big difference. A democracy is two wolves and a lamb voting on what's for dinner. If there are more of you than there are of me, then I lose, and that's a democracy. The Constitution protects the people. Our governments can't take what the Constitution gives us. Constitutional republic is supposed to limit our elected officials and protect we the people. But that isn't always the case, and maybe our elected officials have bought into the belief that we are a democracy and not a constitutional republic. Words matter. Please know we are a constitutional republic. Mr. Franklin was correct in stating, "If you can keep it." I'm choosing to keep it. Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus Victoria's name, you are the God of Westminster. You already have victory, and we share the victory with you. We are your people, and we are victorious. Those that want to bind us and enslave us have no hope against you. Your word is clear in Proverbs 19:21. Many plans are in man's heart, but the Lord's decree will prevail. You want to free people, not slaves, to a system that benefits few. Change is near. Exposure is near. Keep us strong and patient. Keep us faithful to you. We will remain expectant, and we will need you. We ask for what is stated in Psalms 25:4-5. Show me your way, Lord. Teach me your paths. Guide me in your truth and teach me, for you are God, my Savior, and my hope is in you all day long. Our hope is in you. Our current situation demands it. We can't sustain the path we are traveling on. There's too many in our society that are left behind. You have a better future for everyone. You have a brighter future for everyone. Your love for humanity is far greater than we acknowledge. In Isaiah 40:31, it states, "But those who hope in the Lord will renew their strength; they will soar on wings like eagles; they will run and not grow weary; they will walk and not be faint." Our hope is in you. Help us focus our eyes on you and give us your word so we can sustain the onslaught from our enemy. You have us here at this time in the circumstances that surround us for a reason. We can endure if you will remain with us. In your precious name, we pray. Amen. Thank you. Guys, have a nice night.
Thank you. The next speaker is Scott Schilling. Welcome.
Thank you. To the council, thank you. I wanted to start out by chatting a little bit about the website, the Westminster.gov website. It's a beautiful website. It's huge, has every possible thing you can imagine in there to look at. There's only one problem. You have to be a genius to find what you're looking for. Took me hours and hours and hours and hours. Finally found the previous set of financials. But I did. And I spent a lot of time with them, starting with 2016. I worked my way up all the way through 2022. Turns out, we are a fairly wealthy city. Got about $1.2, $1.3 billion in assets. It's $11,000 per citizen, assuming about 120. So I was like, okay, this is interesting. So where's this money coming from? So as I look at this stuff, I see that, starting in 2017, we increase our assets by approximately $56 million a year. 56 million. Not bad. Okay, we are growing at a rate of about 4.6, 4.7 a year, every year. I'm not including inflation, by the way. Inflation means more like we're flat, but we're growing. So where's this money coming from? Where is all this money coming from? The bulk of this money is coming from water rates. So I spent time looking at this stuff. I said, okay, the contribution of water is about 40 to 50% of that number. So when I look at this stuff, I'll let everybody see what I've got. So revenues on water average lately have been about 74, 75 million a year. Okay, that's fine. It can go up and down, but it's mostly been working its way up. Expenses, around 55 million a year, approximately. Okay, that gives you an income of 19 million, 18 million, 22 million on average. Not bad. Now, okay, that's worked out about 25% profit margin. Pretty good. Pretty good. That's coming out of the height of everybody can afford to water their lawns. That's a little high. Now, if I take out depreciation and just look at this as a cash basis, okay? Water, the utilities, the water rates are contributing $36 million to our 51% or 51 million as we grow. Why are we paying all that money? That's absolutely crazy. Now, last week or two weeks ago, I said, look, you know, here is the, just to service the loan for this new plant, it's going to be about 10 million a year, 12, right around there. So if I project forward into this, okay, between the depreciation, I'm doing 150 over 30 years, $5 million a year, plus 20 years of servicing the loan, that's an additional cost of 15 million. All right? So that drops the margins down to from 26% to 7%. It's still a little more logical, okay? But what really gripes me, okay, is one, how hard it was to find this information, how few people actually know this information, and how hard it is to get, okay? So I am challenging the logic behind doing this new power plant, I mean, water treatment plant. The small one we have, we already have, costs about 20 million to build. This one is the same size, 15 million. This one is the same size, 15 million a day, 50 million gallons a day? For $150 million plus infrastructure? Why? Why is that so different? You know, why are we spending, what are we doing? Buying a Cadillac? A Tesla? We don't need that. Frankly, I think we should use a lot less money and just upgrade and harden the things we have. And with that, folks, I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Baraya.
Welcome.
Good evening. Last meeting, I left off my conversation concerning the number of flights that are at Rocky Mountain Airport. In 2011, their master plan and the number of flights were 155,000. In 2030, that was when the master plan said that their flights would be 265,000. Today, we are now at 290,000 flights. Where are we going from here? 90% of these flights, unless somebody proves me wrong, are from flight schools and general aviation. Have we reached our capacity with this airport? Last meeting, I mentioned the unleaded fuel as a replacement for lead fuel. Our MMA made a big deal and had a press conference to announce the acquisition of an unleaded fuel truck. So far, no tanks and not a drop of unleaded fuel sold. I'd like the rep that's on the community roundtable to let me know if I'm wrong because I think this is a fact. You know, the FAA had this memo that came out, and let me read something for you. With the recent FAA nod, the approved model list now covers every spark engine, ignition piston engine, and every airframe using a spark ignition piston engine in the FAA's type certificate database for using unleaded fuel. You should all probably get a copy of this. I'll make sure that you get a copy because you should be aware of that. It only costs 60 to 85 cents per gallon for unleaded fuel over leaded fuel. GA small aircraft only use eight gallons an hour. This would equate to $5 to $7 per hour. It's a relatively small amount for somebody flying a plane. Some pilots have complained about the cost. Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? That's a cost less than a McDonald's meal. The reason for the people in these communities are upset and demanding unleaded fuel is because it's a killer and has been proved in many studies. You can't use unleaded gas or you can't use leaded gas in cars or in paint. Why in airplanes? Perhaps all of you should revisit the Aaron Brockovich story regarding PG&E, who was found liable for dumping a chemical in the ground, the contaminated groundwater that misled the communities and misled the communities of the effects of this chemical on health. In 1996, get this, they had to pay $333 million. That's the largest class action lawsuit in the history of time. Maybe you've also heard about DuPont Chemicals lawsuit. That was a similar suit where they contaminated water. They paid $1.2 billion in that one. And what about the recent Flint, Michigan contamination? This airport is doing the same thing, distributing lead from the aircraft all over our area. We are all subject to lead poisoning. Currently, they are going to tear up one of the airport runways out there, which is downstream to Stanley Lake. We need the Department of Transportation and Health to come out and do tests. You can make it happen. You can make it happen. Do it. Stress the information the scientists gave to you last year. The Noise Roundtable cannot come up with the answers. They just use this as a political cover to let the airport do as they choose. The consultants out there are a waste. Moving flights from one community to another is not the answer. You should demand that the airport charge landing fees, have hours that are reasonable and not overnight so that they disturb communities, and make them switch to unleaded gas. Let's make this happen as Westminster. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Alan Farb.
Welcome. Good evening. I sincerely want to thank the city, Westminster, for opening the Warming Center at the MAC during the frigid temperatures that we experienced not very long ago. I think that ran from Friday night through Tuesday morning. I'm not sure exactly how many unique individuals took advantage of that, but even if one took advantage, it's one person's life that we saved and perhaps we even saved their fingers, their toes from amputation. In addition to that, the city was able to place, I believe, more than 40 people into motels and hotels. I realize this is a, it's quite a bit of logistics that you must do to accomplish this. So I thank the city, the city staff, the council for making sure that this happened. One thing I do want to point out, I sent in an email to council and to certain staff members, is while I am out on my weekly street outreach for homeless, I've encountered in the last month nine Venezuelan asylum seekers. They're being housed currently in Denver. That will end for the majority of them, I believe, on February 5th. So I hope the city will be prepared when we start seeing more people who are thrust out on the street and also not English speakers, but people who sincerely are seeking asylum and are coming here to find work. One thing about the MAC or the Warming Center that I do ask is that you think about revising the temperature threshold from 0 degrees Fahrenheit upward to at least 20 degrees Fahrenheit. 32 degrees Fahrenheit would even be better. That's pretty much it, so I do thank you for operating the Warming Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carolyn Farbman.
Welcome. I have a picture if you wouldn't mind passing around. Hi, council. I encourage you to vote yes to take immediate action to leave the Community Noise Roundtable for Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. Over the past week, I've corresponded with the council, expressing my sentiments through emails and formally submitting evidence on why it's crucial to leave the CNR. I've sent my correspondence to the public comments email for the record. The evidence is there. I'm not just here as a concerned resident, but as a mother, sharing a deeply personal journey that intertwines with a broader issue at hand, the expansion of RMMA near our communities. Let me explain to you my world. He is vibrant, funny, and curious. He is my four-year-old. He loves extreme amounts of cuddles, puzzles, and sticker books. He is my only child, a social butterfly. He thrives in a wonderful neighborhood where parents and children alike have been incredibly welcoming. He frequently runs to the Westbrook Playground screaming, "Everyone, look, I'm here." He's not just a number, he's a real, living part of our community. When he was just learning to speak, I recall our moments at the Westbrook Playground when he'd point to the sky and say, "Look, mommy, a plane." Little did we know, the very planes that excited him posed an unseen threat, leaded fuel. When the EPA came out with this endangerment finding in regards to leaded avgas, my husband and I went into high alert mode. Lead, a substance we thought was banned decades ago, was now a potential danger to our son's well-being. What was worse, my husband, he shouldered the weight of guilt, believing we should have known better when we chose this home. Months of turmoil followed as he grappled with the idea that our decision might have unknowingly put our child at risk. I had to reassure him, it wasn't our fault. There were no warning signs, no indication that the airport, when we moved here, would transform into a bustling hub, bringing increased noise and the threat of leaded fuel from flight schools. I share my story not only as a personal struggle, but how it led me on a path to discover the CNR. Local representatives introduced the CNR as a platform to express concerns about RMMA, promising a focus on solutions. Initially filled with hope, my experience has been quite the opposite. I learned that numerous proposed solutions to Jefferson County and the airport have been dismissed. And after three and a half years, it became apparent that this body had yet to achieve any substantial reduction in the airport's impact of noise and lead. Furthermore, my investigation revealed that the CNR has not only failed to make any progress in mitigating noise, but it has also refused to deal with the escalating issue of lead pollution stemming from flight schools. The majority of this traffic is recreational and does not contribute to the claimed pilot shortage, a notion frequently emphasized by the former airport director, Paul Anzlo. Estimates of lead emission from RMMA are now at 1.3 tons annually. Studies clearly show the lifetime harm that this exposure is creating for our children. The CNR has responded that these matters are outside the scope of the CNR charter, resulting in no action on these concerns. In the context of RMMA/CNR, we also have evidence pointing to false information, misrepresentation, and delays in providing timely information regarding FAA regulation, traffic volume, the nature of air traffic, and other important matters. It's evident that Jeffco and airport staff have intentionally made it challenging for CNR members to grasp complex federal regulations. Additionally, they've actively tried to hinder any meaningful change by undermining the presentation of factual or relevant data that CNR members require for constructive problem solving. In the meantime, while we wait and wait and wait for solutions around noise and impact from unleaded, around noise impact and for unleaded fuel transition, which will only be offered through market demand, operations out of the airport have only grown, growing operations, more flight school aircraft above us, more noise, more sales of leaded avgas, all concentrated over the same areas. In the world of childhood development, especially for those under five, it's a crucial chapter where brains rapidly evolve. Waiting even just a moment, a day, a month, for RMMA to do what is right for the surrounding communities will impact their developing minds. And once there is an impact, there's no turning back. The consequences linger for a lifetime. Leave the CNR, cease the endless swirl, usher and change, and embrace action. Our commitment today shapes the future for our communities and our children. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tom Jurgens.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Tom Jurgens. I live in Westminster. I reside within a couple miles of the airport and work right next to it. I don't find the noise levels to be excessive. I've chatted with residents that reside at the east end of the runway. The balance of the residents are not concerned with the noise levels. Some residents have stated that the noise levels have actually gone down. They enjoy watching the planes coming to and going from the airport, especially the fancy military planes. I support staying in the Rocky Mountain Community Noise Reduction Roundtable. This provides us a voice with surrounding communities with the FEAA and with respect to any noise issues. Leaving this group puts us on the outside of this process. With respect to lead and the fuel for the airplanes, this is separate from being in the Noise Roundtable. The Noise Roundtable addresses noise issues, not lead issues. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carol Gosseheimer.
Welcome.
Council members, I'm coming to you tonight to encourage you to vote yes on the resolution that calls for you to take immediate action to leave the Community Roundtable for Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. I fully support everything the other community members have brought forward as evidence of our need to leave the Community Roundtable as a city. I'd like to share some additional information that I think is important and supports our immediate need to leave the CNR. It's been pointed out that the RMMA/CNR has accomplished nothing of value in three and a half years. The CNR is by design designed to fail. The Centennial Airport Community Roundtable has been at this for decades and they have had the same dismal outcome. Nothing has changed. Albert Einstein wrote that the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. We know historically that the chance of any valuable outcome from the CNR is almost impossible. Let's stop this insanity. Does Westminster want to continue to spend money on and engage in this scam? By continuing, there's an implicit condoning of the behavior and inaction of the Roundtable and with that comes risk to the city. We can't continue to be complicit. The risk of inaction in this case far outweighs the risk of leaving the CNR, which will accomplish nothing. We propose instead perhaps undertaking other valuable steps towards change. So let's talk a little bit about sacrifice zone and environmental justice. Westminster is in what can now be considered a sacrifice zone. Approximately 250 million Americans are living in parts of the US where rates of cancer and other diseases caused by air pollution exceed the US government's own limit of acceptable risk. Environmental experts have a chilling name for these sites, sacrifice zones. Westminster and other communities surrounding RMMA have morphed into sacrifice zones, even if they're not formally selected and designated by the government. This is due to the ongoing operations of RMMA. A UN expert is warned of the creation of pollution sacrifice zones across the world where tens of millions of people are suffering strokes, cancer, respiratory problems, and heart disease as a result of toxic contamination of the environment. The Special Rapporteur on Human Rights and Environment cited physical health issues including cancer, heart disease, respiratory illness, strokes, and reproductive health problems as incredible mental health problems associated with living in these places because people feel exploited. They have no recourse and they feel stigmatized. All of this infringes on their human rights, the rights to life, their rights to health, and the right to a clean, healthy, and sustainable environment. You can't reconcile the fundamental right to a healthy environment with these absolutely horrific conditions. That information comes from The Guardian, March of 2022. I'd like to furthermore point out, and this is more close to home, that the Colorado Environmental Justice Act states the following. Environmental justice recognizes that all people have a right to breathe clean air... Sorry, my phone is going crazy here. That part has just been deleted. All of these deleterious and potentially fatal effects are fatal to the lives of our citizens. How do we calculate the price of a human life due to inaction? Staying in the Community Roundtable equates to inaction. We know they will not do anything. We need change now. The CNR will not affect meaningful action or change. It never has and it never will. With RMMA facing lawsuits, the loss of their director, the resignation of four members of their advisory board, the time is right for us to continue this disruption and leave CNR. We need to clearly communicate to RMMA We need to clearly communicate to RMMA that we will not take this deadly assault on the lives of our citizens any longer. We will not be complicit. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Alejandra Cubas.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Alejandra and I'm from Congresswoman Brittany Patterson's office. I just wanted to stop by, introduce myself, and then let the constituents of Westminster know the services that we offer to everyone. So if anyone's experiencing problems with the federal agency such as the IRS, passports, immigration, or for my fellow veterans with the VA, please reach out to our office for assistance. We can be reached at 303-274-7944. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks for being here tonight.
Of course, have a good night.
And the last person I have on the live speaker list is Tracy Crafttharp.
Thank you. My name is Tracy Crafttharp. I'm a Jefferson County Commissioner. I am not here representing the Jefferson County Board of Commissioners. I am not here representing Jefferson County. I am here to speak to you as a member of the Community Noise Roundtable. I've participated as a member since the beginning, January 2021, which is three years ago this month. I have not missed a meeting. I had tickets to Bruce Springsteen last March, and so had the meeting on virtual, well, before Bruce Springsteen came on. That's because this is a meeting that I always prioritize. I'm hearing the eloquent, heart wrenching testimony of people, and it makes me wonder if we're talking about the same meetings and if we're talking about the same issues because I certainly have a different experience. There seems to be an expectation by some of the members of the roundtable, but also by members of the public, that we have a problem, we have a solution, and we're going to find a solution and we're going to end it and we're all going to go home. But the FAA has requested that airports, 19,000 general aviation airports around the country, form these Community Noise Roundtables to be able to pull together communities in the impacted areas to work in a consensus based model to make recommendations to the FAA. The noise issue is not going to go away, and there needs to be an avenue for communities to be able to come in and talk about, to be able to work with their fellow community members. Someone mentioned Centennial Airport. I attend the Centennial Noise Roundtable on a regular basis. They've been meeting for 20 years. And they talk about the noise of the airplanes and they listen to their citizens. There's two purposes to the, the noise roundtables. One is for communities to be able to have a seat at the table, have a seat at the table. The second is for citizens who don't have the courage to be able to come here to council meetings and talk to you, to be able to come and talk in a forum about their concerns and their issues. So I think part of what, I pay attention to time here, everybody came to the roundtable in a different place. Our airport director, the city of Louisville, the town of Superior, met for two years in a noise task force, and they hired a consultant and put together a work plan and put together noise abatement procedures. And as part of that, they put together this Community Noise Roundtable. They were the predecessors of the, of the roundtable. So we, they came to us and we put together a work plan. So the question around what have we done is we've done numerous things. Number one, besides providing a seat at the table for communities in the impacted areas and a forum for citizens to be able to talk about their concerns, those are the two most important things. But other things that this roundtable has accomplished has been input in the strategic business plan that the airport was putting together around development. We did a pilot project around sending planes up 287 instead of through Superior. And that pilot project, actually, we had more complaints than we had before, so we did that for 30 days. We developed evidence based land use policies. So how can communities look at, if you are built, are making proposal, if you have proposals on land use projects within the impacted areas, what can you do to be able to help those new citizens that are moving into the airport impacted area? We have a 47% compliance rate in nighttime reduction of noise. We're in the middle right now of asking our schools to be able to utilize the south runway instead of the north runway. We have 47% compliance rate, and we have heard from people that there is a reduction in the noise. Those are some of the small things that we've done. The large thing we've done is we hired a consultant who's looking at egress degress plans, places. I just want to say to you that if you decide to leave, number one, the FAA wants all communities to be able to be at the table, to be able to make recommendations. But we have a consultant that we've paid a lot of money and is looking at recommendations, and we are, will be getting those recommendations in February or March. So the timing of you all leaving is very inconsistent. So I know you all need to make the decision that's best for your community. I just want to say again, communities have a seat at the table, citizens have access to a forum. Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last live speaker I had, but we do have five voicemails.
Sierra Crosby. Hello, council. My name is Sierra Crosby and I live in Westminster. I encourage you to vote yes to take immediate action to leave the Community Noise Roundtable, CNR, for Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. Westminster left the CNR in 2022 and only decided to rejoin falling pleased to do so from Airport Director Anzlo in Jefferson County. The airport's former director, in a publicly released and reported transcript, disparages the CNR itself as a waste of time and money, and the residents who attend the CNR meetings as nut jobs. He also said the airport doesn't have to pay a penny for it. Boulder County, Jeffco, Westminster, Arvada, Superior, Louisville, and Lafayette, they're the ones that have to pay for the consultants. For this council to continue its membership with the CNR would demonstrate a lack of respect of Westminster citizens and others who have devoted hundreds of hours of volunteer time to do research and provide credible information to this council and to other public officials responsible for the welfare of their communities. This waste of time and money, as Mr. Anzlo states, is contributing to a future where children may face the burdens of neurological damage, lower IQ, behavioral issues, learning disabilities, speech and language delays, and a diminished capacity to earn as much as they otherwise could have. I wouldn't wish these enduring challenges heightened by the repercussions of elevated lead levels in children on any family. And what about the costs associated with those burdens? Would you wish that on families too? And yet, while we wait for an unleaded fuel transition, Jefferson County and the airport have done nothing to reduce operations or to find solutions to the never ending circles these aircraft do over the same areas over and over again. Concentrated noise and concentrated lead. Their concern seems to prioritize the public airport, subsidized by our tax dollars, as a business they'd like to grow, neglecting the safety of our community and our children. The recent revelations of the record breaking sales of leaded avgas in 2023, exceeding a staggering 600,000 gallons, further underscores the urgent need for action. The weight of this situation is felt deeply, and the time for change is now. We have a responsibility. We need to stop hiding behind the CNR, which is clearly not working, and make a change, take action. City council, our state reps, and the CDPHE need to stop deflecting responsibilities, which take immediate action, bring CDPHE and Dr. Sammy Zaran in without delay. Let's not allow another month to pass without addressing this critical matter. Also, my understanding is that the Westminster City Council has invited the CDPHE to present at a study session on March 4. However, we need more than a study session from the CDPHE. We need open conversation, public comment, and most of all, action. Action includes initiating a more proactive educational campaign on aviation gas lead dangers, and we need testing of lead in communities around the airport. The CDPHE should involve Dr. Zaran, who was aided in community education after the Reed Hillview Study. He lives right here in Colorado. Thank you for your time.
Hello, council. This is Teddy Kilkowski and I live in Westminster. I encourage you to vote yes to take immediate, immediate action to leave the Community Noise Roundtable for Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport. I've reached out to you all via email today presenting evidence of why we should leave the CNR. I am also aware that you have received correspondence from other community members, which has outlined additional reasons to leave. I'll summarize a partial list for you. Number one, former director Paul Anzlo's leaked transcript calling the CNR a waste of time and money and labeling the residents as nut jobs. Number two, claims from the airport and Jefferson County about the inability to implement proposed solutions such as touch and go operations or landing fees. The town of Superior has retained counsel and filed a lawsuit against the airport confirming that many of the things RMMA refused to consider as solutions for our communities are actually viable options. Number three, a false commitment to unleaded fuel. Despite the recent purchase of a new fuel truck, the message to date has been that sales will be determined by market demand. Number four, a lawsuit involving over 400 Rocket Creek residents because the airport broke an easement agreement with them in regard to the number of operations that would take place over their neighborhood. And number five, expanding the airport with an outdated 2011 master plan. For this council to continue its membership with the CNR would demonstrate a lack of respect of Westminster citizens and others who have devoted hundreds of hours of volunteer time to do research and provide credible information to this council and other public officials responsible for the welfare of their communities. Personally, I want to remind everyone that we removed leaded gas from our cars decades ago when we realized the harmful impact. Now we have leaded gas particulate clouds from these planes and we are just breathing it in every day, and how are we okay with this? The airport and Jefferson, Jefferson County's concerns seem to prioritize the public airport, subsidized by our tax dollars, as a business that they would like to grow, neglecting the safety of our community and our children as we linger in anticipation. The recent revelation of a record breaking sale of leaded avgas in 2023, exceeding a staggering 600,000 gallons, further underscores the urgent need for action. The weight of this situation is felt deeply, and the time for change is now. We have a responsibility. We need to stop hiding behind the CNR, which is clearly not working, and make a change, take action. City council, our state reps, and CDPHE need to stop deflecting responsibilities. We need to take immediate action. With RMMA facing lawsuits, the loss of their airport director, and the resignation of four members of their advisory board, the time is right to leave the CNR. We need to clearly communicate to RMMA that we will not take this any longer and we will not be complicit. Lastly, my understanding is that Westminster City Council has invited the CDPHE to present at a study session on March 4. However, we need more than a study session from the CDPHE. We need open conversation, public comment, and most of all, action. Action includes initiating a more proactive educational campaign on avgas lead dangers. And we need testing of lead in communities around the airport. The CDPHE should involve Dr. Zaran, who aided in community education after the Reed Hillview Study. He lives right here in Colorado. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Jason Farman and I am a Westminster resident. I'm calling about Westminster's involvement in the Community Noise Roundtable and concerns about RMMA. KUNC recently released a transcript of former flight director Paul Anzlo speaking about the Community Noise Roundtable. He said, "I want them to waste their money and time. Because here's the deal, Centennial Airport had a noise roundtable for 20 plus years. Nothing gets done. It just makes people feel happy that they're part of the roundtable and they get to..." A curse word is inserted here. He also said this, these are quotes. "It will probably take five years and a couple hundred thousand dollars of taxpayers' money that's wasted, and I get to sit there and be like, hey, we support this, we can, we do anything we can to help with noise." These are quotes that are on a transcript that have been released from the most recent director of RMMA. I have not seen a public rebuke from Tracy Carp or other Jefferson County commissioners on these statements. Based on these quotes and our county's apparent lack of concern, how can one conclude that the CNR is trying to address the concerns of Westminster citizens? Since the inception of CNR, the amount of noise, lead gas, and operations at the airport have dramatically increased. These are facts and are measurable with available numeric data. How can it be said that the CNR is an effective solution to addressing airport concerns from Westminster citizens when it is failed to improve, failed to improve conditions in every measurable metric? Can Councilor Demott, our city representative at the CNR meetings, clearly state what the actual actions and solutions he is hoping to accomplish through these meetings? Can he provide what he hopes to achieve through measurable data? At the city council meeting on January 8, Councilor Demott stated that there are, quote, "Some people really like the airplane," end quote. Is his call to try and reduce noise, or is it to ensure the airport is allowed to operate without being impacted by the community? Can Councilor Demott state his goals of these meetings on public record? Can the CNR and Jefferson County even define the actions that are legally permissible to be taken to reduce noise? Politicians hide behind the CNR and say that's where these problems are discussed. As said by the former flight director Paul Anzlo, this is a misdirect to waste people's time and money. Look at flight paths of airplanes from RMMA. The reach of these aircraft and their touch and goes or low flying flights extend miles. This is not only a concern of those, quote, end quote, near the airport. There are airports scattered all throughout the front range. Proximity can no longer be an excuse to ignore community impact. The concern of citizens demonstrated at the Superior October 23 meeting with the Attorney General show the reach of these concerns. I also would like to say that personally, I first became concerned about RMMA through reading articles about lead. Noise became a concern afterward. However, they are both very important to me, but I know some people are concerned with the order in which someone came concerned. The first time I became concerned about RMMA was reading the articles about the lead avgas, and I'm happy to put that on public record. However, I am very impacted by the noise as well. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yvgenia Mengen and I live in the Horizon Plains neighborhood in Westminster. I'm calling because I have serious concerns about the use of leaded gas at the Rocky Mountain Airport, and I wanted to give you a call just to tell you a little bit about my family and why it's important to me, why it should be important to all of us. I have two young children, a daughter who is three years old, soon to be four, and a son who just turned two. They go to a daycare here in the neighborhood. They will be going to Lucas Elementary, also in the neighborhood. And every day as parents, we think about what's best for our children, and we make every effort to provide good food for them, choose the right neighborhood to live, where they go to school, where they learn. Of course, there are a lot of things that are beyond our control as parents, but there are a lot of things that are within our control, and ensuring that kids, our kids are not exposed to lead is one of those things. You know, not until a while ago, I, I would go to the pediatrician and when we fill out the form about lead, I would confidently check that, no, my kids are not exposed to lead until I learned recently that in fact they are from the, from the leaded gas from the airport. And it was a shock to me, and it's a huge concern because we all know that the reason why leaded gas was banned back in 1996 is because of its terrible impacts on development of children and people. There are lots of studies, right, that show that there, there is, it's connected to IQ levels being lowered. So I am, I am calling to express my concerns. I'm calling to ask that something is done to reduce operations. I'm calling to ask that something is done to reduce operations at the airport and that we transition to unleaded gas. And then generally, that we just have commitment to our children to really make sure that we raise healthy, active members of our society. And I ask that as council members, that you take this issue close to your heart and do something as soon as possible to ensure that we breathe clean air. Thank you for your time. I appreciate all the work that you're doing, and I believe that you're committed to public welfare, and I am excited to see what you're going to accomplish to advance this issue. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and councilors. My name is David Carpenter. I live in the Countryside neighborhood. I'm calling to testify on Resolution Number Two affecting the City of Westminster's withdrawal from the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable. I encourage you to vote no on leaving the roundtable. So first, the Noise Roundtable is an opportunity for us to be at the table. When you're at the table, you're at least able to discuss issues and sometimes influence solutions. Withdrawal from that removes us from the conversation. It may be good if you want to scream to the ether with no response, and that will guarantee the city and its residents have no voice in these concerns. This is the FAA process, and while it may be cumbersome, it is a process, and the FAA is listening. We already know some flight paths and runway breaches have been modified from this process. Now, second, I know a former Director of the airport claimed that these meetings have no purpose. I do not know what his reasoning was for those comments. However, we do know that he was involuntary separated from the airport. And it is, we, and the city also left at that time, and they're now back, so we can all have our conversation. We should get more information on maybe why he was terminated, and that's really not a good reason to leave at this time. Third, I live in Countryside, so I'm under the flight path, too. Sometimes there's a plane overhead every few seconds. However, this isn't a desperation of our quality of life. I've had Zoom meetings with no issues hearing your speaking, and I even testified remotely to the Noise Roundtable from my backyard while planes were flying overhead. No one on the Zoom call or I was impacted by that. Fourth, everyone in the planned subdivisions, such as Countryside, have a navigation easement over the subdivisions. I mean, the planes have the right to travel there, in the airspace above our houses. These easements were disclosed purchasers in these subdivisions. Since the planes have the right to travel over our properties, this is a reason we need to continue our membership in the Noise Roundtable to affect minor changes in the operations of the planes. Finally, a lot of people last meeting testified about lead concerns. That is entirely separate issue than the Noise Roundtable. There are many studies and points to be made before RMMA becomes entirely lead-free in 2027, and I don't want to diminish that. I just want to remind the council that this vote is only about removing ourselves from the Noise Roundtable, nothing else. Please vote no on that. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
That was the last voicemail message.
Thank you. That brings us to City Manager's Report. Do you have one tonight?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, councilors, ladies and gentlemen in attendance, anybody watching online. We've got a few updates, so if we could go to the next slide. So first update is our series again that we're repeating. We did this last year with Woman of Light, but the Westminster One Book, and this year it will be White Horse, a book by Erica T. Worth. And this is an opportunity to bring family, friends, neighbors together through a shared experience of reading the story and discussing those community-relevant themes. It is a, an event that will feature artwork and some programs to explore and celebrate in the indigenous cultures. It also will offer here the Indigenous Storytelling Night and also a Culture Day. And so we'll culminate everything on March 9th with a talk from the author, so pretty cool there. And that will be at City Park Rec Center, and it's certainly open and free to the public. If anybody wants to learn more, it is on our website. If you go to our city website slash onebook, you can learn more, and I encourage folks to do that. Next slide. Another update real quick is our Westminster Emergency Cold Weather Shelter, and I'll point out the two pictures on the right. So when we started on Friday night at 6:00 PM, we were prepared to take on 32 folks, and that's the image that you see in the upper right. Saturday afternoon, early evening, we got a call that said, hey, we have some overflow that we need to meet. We could bring you up to 90 additional people. And so kudos to our Westminster Fire Department, our Recreation Division, our Police Department, and City Leadership Team for getting busy rallying the troops, if you will, and, you know, meeting capacity at 110 beds or locations for people to spend the night. And so they expanded from 32 to 110 slots, which was pretty impressive in a matter of hours. I would tell you that because of that expanded capacity, we were able to open it up for folks from Arbada, Brighton Commerce City, and Lakewood that were overflow and couldn't be housed in their own communities. Happy to do that, happy to support that. We, in total, to answer Mr. Farb's question, 121 distinct individuals took advantage of the program over the four days. We were also able to handle, in addition to those in the shelter, 61 people that we provided hotel vouchers here in the community. And then on average, Mr. Farb, again, you asked about how many people use the facility on average, and it was 42 at any given time. So a great resource for the community, something very, very proud of the city staff for all their work in making this happen. It's not easy, and it is labor-intensive. We have contracted with a company called Bayou, and they were the ones that ran the day-to-day operations of the facility, and they were absolutely excellent partners. And so very excited about this addition to our services that we offer here in the community. Next slide. Westy Win, so Westminster is again a leader in digital communications within, within the nation. So in addition to winning three National Communications Awards in 2023, I wanted to let everybody know that we continue to outpace our peer communities in North Metro area in digital engagement. Our social engagement grew by 35% in 2023 over 2022 numbers, and our Westy blog had over 3,000, correction, 312,000 views. Very, very proud of our communications divisions, all that they do with the Westy Word, certainly the magazine, the blog, and the newsletter. And so we look forward to continued growth and expansion in that engagement situation. Next slide. Another Westy Win, the Deekman Property, cleanup complete. If you've driven by their site is clear, it's clean, and we will begin the restoration of that area as open space in the next few months. But for those that aren't familiar with that site, it's right down here on 92nd Avenue, immediately west of Pierce Street and in front of Tri-City Baptist. And, you know, cleaned up the property, removed a lot of asbestos, but again, the intent is to add that parcel to our open space offerings here in the community. Later this year, we believe that it will be open to the public. And so that's a huge win for our city, our Parks Division, and certainly our community. And so well done to the staff that worked that issue. Next slide. Another Westy Win, the Environmental Compliance Team, which focuses internally on the city organization. They had some significant achievements. 2023 wanted to inform everybody about those. So if you look at the data listed to the left, recycling efforts, 400 pounds of ink and toner, monitors, TVs, electronic waste, aerosol cans, cans of paint, lead acid batteries, helium tanks, propane tanks, all properly recycled. We trained 140 staff on spill prevention, along with stormwater on illicit discharges, and we've assisted four facilities with safety data sheets, 11 facilities with internal assessments, and two work groups with donating over 500 pounds of hand sanitizer to those that might need that here in the community. So a great win by our Environmental Compliance Team here in the city. Next slide. Some things to know, tomorrow night's Planning Commission meeting has been canceled. That would normally be from 7:00 to 10:00 PM here in council chambers, but canceled this time around. Historic Landmark Board meeting is Wednesday, January 24th, 7:00 to 8:30 PM. That's in PRL, the PRL conference room downstairs. And then Westminster Hills Open Space Community Open House, that's this Saturday. It's from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. It's at City Park Recreation Center. And if you want to learn more about Westminster Hills Open Space and some of the challenges that we have, and possibly get some ideas and feedback on solutions and how to improve what's going on out there, we'd certainly appreciate everybody's attendance. No City Council Study Session on Monday, the 29th, that's the fifth Monday. And then we will start February with a City Council Study Session on the 5th, 6:30 PM, right here in council chambers, and we've got a concept plan review to kick off the month. And so we're looking forward to that. Next slide. Information-only items, none tonight. And again, remind everybody that we want to be accessible, responsive, transparent, and accountable. You can contact me at that phone number listed there, 303-658-2006. You can email me directly at mfritag@westminsterco.gov. And as always, you can like us on Facebook, follow us on X. You can check us out on Instagram or ring our bell at Next Door. Pending any questions, that's all I have this evening.
Any questions? Counselor Isadi?
A quick question regarding the impending refugee crisis. Is the city, so as we know, there are folks who are looking, seeking safety and opportunity, and overflow from Denver might be coming pretty soon. Are we preparing? Are there plans in place? What's, is that on the radar operationally?
Nothing, nothing that, you know, I would roll out in anything more than just, you know, draft ideas and concepts at this point. You know, we've been contacted by the City of Denver for possible use of hotels here in the Westminster area. To my knowledge, they haven't been accessed yet, but that could be a reality here in the future. I've shared that with the council previously. Like Mr., was it Farb who mentioned? Yes. You know, we are starting to see some of our migrant members, you know, especially on the south side of town, but nothing definitive at this point.
City Council comments? Counselor Carmelia?
Yes. Thank you. I heard both from yourself, from your report, and from folks here that attended, like Mr. Farb and our county commissioners, that the emergency shelter was very successful. And I heard thank yous from counties for our ability to accept overflow. But I really want to follow up on the ask from Mr. Farb about expanding our temperatures and what our requirements are for opening these emergency shelters. And I realize that this will likely take a cost and resource requirements analysis, but I'd love to look into that and find out, you know, we have to start somewhere, and I'd love to see it at least at 32 degrees, but even if we look at alternatives such as 20 degrees, I'd like to see some numbers around that and what we can do to get some type of analysis started.
Counselor Irvin?
I would just like to thank everyone that came tonight. I learned a lot from many of you about the airport, about Lexington's problems with their path, about the contract with Laramie Associates. You know, this contract was started under Don Trip, so that says a lot to me. I thank you all for coming.
Anyone else?
Sorry, didn't see your light.
That's okay. Just a couple of things that came to mind while hearing some of the public comment. One, you know, when we, we have heard in the past, there's a desire to have some, some type of rec use up in the north area, and I'm just curious to know, I distinctly recall that other communities did not want to share in the recycling facilities that they were running in terms of expanding that to Westminster residents. But I'm curious to know if there have ever been conversations regarding just some joint use agreements for, I don't know, certain geographies so that maybe we don't have to create a whole, you know, additional rec facility, but maybe we can work with another community to put some money towards their facility and therefore open that up to some of, some of our residents? A thought. You don't have to answer it right now. Oh, okay.
So one of the items that, you know, will be a topic for discussion, certainly in our strategic plan discussions, but something the staff's been working at is what is the solution set for a recreation center on the north side of town? I think we found a reasonable funding source for that. So, you know, the, the, the basic building blocks are there, but something we'd like to talk with the council specifically during the strategic plan about.
Okay. And, you know, if there are other ideas that are potentially more cost-effective, we'd love to hear that, too. And I would also be interested in hearing what the cost and resource impact would be on the, in the expansion of our weather, our minimum degree requirement for the, for the, for the facility at the MAC. I would, you know, since we did have so many other jurisdictions participating in that, so if we were to expand our definition of that cold weather, could, could we also potentially work with our neighbors who would find that helpful, and maybe they can help fund that differential? It kind of makes sense to me if they're using it as well, and they all see a benefit in it. So I wouldn't just take it on ourselves. I'd look for some opportunities for collaboration.
Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody who showed up tonight to address us. I would put support behind at least trying to understand better the temperature that we have chosen as far as when we activate those centers. And, I mean, even at 20 degrees, it seems like a, you know, an area where maybe there's some room, but I'd like to understand also better why we chose the degrees that we have or the levers. And we've probably been shown that, but would like it to be part of the topic of discussion if we're going to look at temperature. So the other thing that I wanted to address, because this isn't the first time that we've heard about the trails at Lexington as well as the open space, and it's not the only community that we've heard as far as the open space and grass and, and things of that nature. So I am curious about what it would take if we could get more information for that to actually happen in the city to exercise what they mentioned is in their original agreement as far as what it would take from our end, what it would take from their HOA, because I have to imagine they have to have some sort of vote in order to do that. But I would be open to hearing that. And additionally, my thought as I listened to the speakers, that could be a good opportunity to partner with a particular community to see about, you know, helping change the grass out for water savings, because that's something that we tried to do as a city. We're trying to do that here at City Hall. So I'm curious the opportunity around that, potentially even with, you know, I know that those ARP of funds are spoken for, but we did as a council the last time we talked, and this is a changed council, but we did talk about potentially using some of those dollars as a test pilot somewhere in the community. And so perhaps this is an opportunity for us to do that. So those were a couple thoughts I had as I listened to the speakers, because they did bring up some points that I did not realize as far as their trail system and with us having other areas that use it and the liability and all the things they mentioned, I do think it warrants a bigger conversation from the city side. And then lastly, I, you know, I hate to belabor this and to even speak to it, but former Counselor Baker was here tonight, and I think it's unfortunate that he's not here to hear my comments, so maybe some of his groupies in the back can share with him that he can come and listen. Yep, yep. What par for course. But, you know, it's said that trouble hurts the most when it proves self-inflicted. Counselor Baker spoke about what council action took with the former council versus comments that Counselor Baker made about one of our employees. I would remind the public that our employees are the city manager, the city attorney, and the city judge. Just like I, in my day job, would expect that my employer would protect me from what I would see as inappropriate action, the council was forced to do something. It did not stop Counselor Baker from sharing his views. He has every freedom of speech that everybody else has, but it was a move by the council to say we do not... to say, "We do not approve of your behavior." That is simply it. It has no hate. I hate having, that I had to do it. I hate that I was put in that situation, and I'm sure that my colleagues probably felt the same way, if there's any hate. When it came to the City Hall, or the City Town Hall last week, there were, if you saw the cards that we were given, there were cards, and they were pretty uniform, except for a couple of emails that were printed out that were more than a full sheet. I think that it's unreasonable that one member of the public thinks, especially a member of the public who understands how town halls work, to give something like that to the mayor and then come here and beat her up for not being able to read a page-long thing when the rest of the community did not get that same opportunity. His question can be addressed, just like the other ones that we couldn't address in full at that town hall. That is not unfair, that not, I do not see that as hateful. But again, he knew that, and he chose to address his concerns in the way he did, and I have a feeling, from working with him, he knew the outcome that he would get. So I see that as self-inflicted, and I think his comments here tonight were unfortunate. And I'll leave it at that.
Yes, I just wanted to add that I know it takes a lot of time and energy to come up here and speak, so thank you again to all of our speakers. And I should say out loud that I do plan to go visit that Lexington Trail myself. I'd love to go see it and check it out, and I know we already promised to follow up on it, but I hope that we can follow up with good news for you. So thank you.
See no other lights. That brings us to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve items 8A through 8C? Counselor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve consent agenda items 8A through 8C.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve items 8A through 8C. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Ireland?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Roll call, please. Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Ozati?
Yes.
Counselor Haught?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nirmella?
Yes.
And Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 7-0 vote. Okay, I've been asked for a break, so a five-minute break.
Are we ready? All right, that brings us to item 10. A1, move to pass councilor's bill number three. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass council bill number three on first reading, amending chapter thirty-four of title one Westminster Municipal Code Concerning Collective Bargaining for Firefighters.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass councilor's bill number three. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Demott.
Yes.
Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Hatt.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nirmella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
And Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote. Counselor Demott.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to pass council bill number four on first reading, amending chapter thirty-five of title one Westminster Municipal Code Concerning Collective Bargaining for Police Officers.
Mayor Protem.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass councilor's bill number four. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Demott.
Just one thing I wanted to share with the public because I know that firefighters had representation during public comment to support the firefighter piece of this. Council did receive something from representation of the FOP also letting us know that they supported these changes. And so I just wanted to share that in case any of the public are listening tonight so that they know this is also supported by the Union of the Police Officers.
The only thing that I had sent in as a question, because if this comes to impasse and we have to send it to vote of the public, it would be then a special election. And so my question was, couldn't they look at the last week of August as the date it has to be done? Because then it could be put on that year's election and not cost us a special election. But that's how they put it together. So I'm just sharing, if we can avoid special elections, I always like to do that and save you all some money. Seeing nothing else, roll call, please. Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
Counselor Hatt.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nirmella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
And Counselor Demott.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote. That brings us to councilor's bill number five. Mayor Protem.
I move to pass councilor bill number five on first reading, approving the amended and restated concessionaire lease agreement between the City of Westminster and Highland Hills Park and Recreation District as landlord and Top One Incorporated DBA Bender's Bar and Grill as tenant for the operation of the restaurant concession in the ICE Center at the Promenade, beginning January first, 2024, and ending on June thirtieth, 2029, with options for two additional five-year term renewals as part of the amended and restated lease.
Counselor Demott.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass councilor's bill number five. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please. Counselor Hatt.
Yes.
Mayor McNally.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nirmella.
Yes.
Counselor Ireland.
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia.
Yes.
Counselor Demott.
Yes.
And Counselor Azadi.
Yes.
The motion passes on a seven-zero vote. That brings us to item C1, discuss the merit of the city's ongoing participation in the Rocky Mountain Metropolitan Airport Community Noise Roundtable. Do you want to kick it off?
Mayor, there's no presentation this night, but Mayor Protem had asked that I read one of our answers that we had to a question earlier today. So Mayor Protem Nirmella had asked us to please provide a list of accomplishments from the CNR. Since we joined, it's difficult to assess the merits if we don't have context for past and potential future accomplishments. And so staff responded with, the below is a list of accomplishments that RMMA CNR members have expressed during meetings when they were asked this question. Number one, decreased noise at night by voluntary runway usage. Two, hired a consultant working on new egress and ingress pathways. Three, conducted a thirty-day pilot program using Highway two-eight-seven rather than over Superior. Four, negotiated on a Part 150 study. And for those that don't know what that is, a Part 150 voluntary FAA program sets guidelines for airport operations to document aircraft noise exposure and to establish noise abatement and compatible land use programs. Next, gave feedback to the airport on strategic plan incorporating noise concerns. And lastly, decreased use of leaded gas, avgas early by investing in needed infrastructure.
Anyone else? Counselor Demott.
I have stuff once if we, I didn't know if we want to get this on the table first before we discuss, but I did want to at least address, and I appreciate the note on the avgas, but I want to make sure, because we've heard it a couple times tonight, and I certainly want people to realize that the Community Noise Roundtable is dealing with noise. I think that that was really out of, if anything, pressure through that process from the public, that Jefferson County made the decision to make that investment. So it's not necessarily the Noise Roundtable's accomplishment. I would say that's more of a Jefferson County and the RMMA airports accomplishment.
If there's no more discussion on this, do we have a motion to adopt resolution number two? This one is to get us off of the roundtable.
I make a motion. To get off the roundtable.
I second. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number two. Is there further discussion? Oh, Counselor Demott.
So we've heard, and I've shared this before, but I'll share it again. And there were some folks in the public comment tonight who wanted me to specifically say what I wanted to accomplish because I made the comment that some people like planes. And I'm sorry, that's just the truth. The truth is, some people do like the planes. With that being said, my position on the Noise Roundtable is to take information back to this body and then to use this body's vote in order to advocate against noise on the Community Roundtable. It's never been to get rid of planes. It's to figure out ways to work with our community partners through the FAA avenue in order to do that. That is what I've tried to set out to accomplish. And quite frankly, I ended up with the responsibility because nobody else wanted to do it after Counselor Baker resigned from the position because he didn't agree with the majority of council's position. So with that being said, I would like to remind folks that this is the FAA's way for us to be able to have a seat at the table. We've heard that tonight. I hate to belabor it, but it's just the reality of it. If we leave the roundtable, that's not going to change that. If Westminster decides to do its own roundtable, the FAA is going to say, that's not what we do, because that's not what they do. There is a roundtable for that airport currently. If you leave that, the airport's not going to go away. Our voice is going to go away. We're no longer going to have a seat at the table. We're no longer going to be able to advocate for the residents of Westminster when it comes to issues of noise with the FAA. And the FAA is the one who controls airplanes. Once they leave the ground, it's up to the FAA. I don't, I didn't make that rule. I'm not the one who put that in place. It was there far before me. I would like to share some of the accomplishments that I have heard as far as some of the voluntary things that were done. And this came from the trustee, Jason Serbu. He was the one who worked with the flight schools, former director Anzlo, and the airport and the FAA to come up with some different voluntary flight patterns. I gave council, I made sure everybody had a copy of this, so you could see where those recommended flight paths were for the touch and goes at night, because that's where we've heard the majority of the complaints when it comes to noise in the evening. And so one of the things that they set out to do was to get fifty percent volun, or voluntary participation in those abatement measures. And so what, and they thought that it would take twelve months. What he has told us, he just sent this out to the CNR this morning, as of January twenty-second, 2024, there have been a total of one hundred and forty-four nighttime flight operations conducted as touch and goes from ten to six AM. Of those one hundred and forty-four, sixty-seven followed the voluntary pattern utilizing runway three dash zero dash R and one dash two dash L. This has produced a forty-seven percent complacency rate after only four months, the introduction of this pattern on September nineteenth, 2023. Their initial estimate was anticipated to get fifty percent compliance only after twelve months of this being in place. Since October thirteenth, 2023, when representatives from Jefferson County and the town of Superior sat down with FAA, ATC, RMMA, and the flight schools, there have been fifty-eight nighttime touch and go operations with forty-one taking the voluntary pattern for a compliance of seventy-one percent. That's, that's a pretty big accomplishment, if you ask me. And I live in that community, and I routinely am outdoors past ten o'clock at night, and I can tell you since this went into effect that I have noticed the difference. So I can't, in all good conscience, sit here and say that nothing has been accomplished. Has it been slow? It's been slower than I like. I was initially the one who asked for us to leave the roundtable, and we were told by Jefferson County, that is our avenue from the FAA for us to have a voice. And that is why I agreed reluctantly with my colleagues at the time for us to go back. The other thing that I did reach out to other representatives that I wanted to know their take on what's going on here tonight. Many of them have their own council meetings or town meetings tonight as well. So I know that I spoke to the chair, Devin, from Broomfield. And what Devin shared with me was his desire for us to at least wait until after the next meeting, because the next meeting is when we get the results back from the consultants, which you heard from Commissioner Krafttharp when she spoke to us earlier tonight. We've already spent money on that. We leave now, we don't even hear the results of the money that we've invested of taxpayer dollars. So I don't think that that makes sense. And then I also spoke to Counselor Marriott from Arvada, and he has a similar thought that I do, is you won't have a voice if, if we walk away. And he knows that it will weaken the voice of the CNR if members start leaving it, because there'll be less communities who are affected, that the FAA isn't going to put as much weight into it, which is the whole reason that we at the time decided to go back into the CNR. So I do understand, again, that the concerns about lead, but to me, that's a separate issue, and I am pleased with the work that staff has done in order to get CDPE here. They've talked to our federal delegation. They're talking to the right people about lead. And the CNR is not the right place for that conversation. It's not that it's the wrong conversation, but you have to have the right conversation with the right folks. If I have a fire, I call the fire department. If I have somebody trying to steal my car, I call the police department. We have to deal with the right entity in order to accomplish what we're trying to accomplish. And so this is going to be a multi-path thing. And so I hope that my colleagues will vote against this resolution so that we can continue the work that we're doing in the CNR. It, it is going to continue to be hard and frustrating. I understand that. But I do think it is the right thing for us to do for our community.
Counselor Carmelia.
Thank you. I want to thank Counselor Azadi for calling this to a vote. It brought, it brought to the forefront constituent concerns about the CNR, which have been ongoing, and it forced us to deal with the issue. And I also want to thank everyone who called and wrote very detailed emails about their position on the matter, and who have been writing for weeks on end at this point, and explained why this is so important to them in very great detail. I also want to reiterate some of what was just said on separating the issues that we are discussing, to be very clear. I personally will stand for and argue for better health and environmental protections if such a proposition or a format to work on such a proposition is brought before me. However, we are currently discussing the CNR, which is a Community Noise Roundtable. So this Community Roundtable is to discuss noise, which has to do with flight paths. I also want to talk about some of the complaints that have been brought before us. Some of those include the lack of progress for Westminster residents concerning those flight paths, which Counselor Demott just discussed, and we've actually have had a forty-seven percent success rate on that note. I'd like to mention that all the measurements in the CNR that we discuss with pilots are voluntary, and there is dissatisfaction on that note, and that there's a lack of ability to affect change in environmental measures. And that is because this is a Noise Roundtable. And so I want to set aside all complaints dealing with lead to a different discussion, and I hope that we pursue that somehow in a different discussion. And then there is the scandal, the director himself being caught stating that this is a waste of time and money for cities, which is pretty damning. I want to mention my personal critical concerns, which are our responsibilities as a neighbor and partner to our residents here in the city to have an outlet, to speak to the RMMA, and to our next-door cities and counties, and the airport, which isn't going anywhere, and we will have to continue to work with. My next concern is how will we have a voice if we are no longer represented? How will our residents communicate their concerns when they have them? And why do we deserve a say when we will not participate in the coordinated efforts of the region? Since rejoining the CNR, as was just mentioned by Counselor Demott, last year, a consultant was hired, as Commissioner Tracy Krafttharp also mentioned, apologies, a consultant was hired to help with CNR's work plan. One of the major topics was the visual flight patterns, which is the main purpose of the CNR. The upcoming meeting this February first is when the results of that work will likely be presented. For this discussion, we need all members to be present during the crucial conversation. Has all of the time, effort, and money that we've already invested in the CNR been wasted if we do not present ourselves to have a seat at the table when those results are finally revealed? We also need to discuss the future of the CNR after that presentation, which has been an ongoing conversation. And so I want to reiterate the statement that the timing of this conversation is not well-planned. My ask, if we stay in the CNR, is to Joe, our Jefferson County city manager, and to our county commissioners, who is present here demonstrating her commitment to this. You've heard the very serious concerns of our residents. You've listened, and you've read the emails. I implore you to work hard to put the concerted effort into the CNR that it needs to be successful, especially over the upcoming month, when very critical decisions are being discussed. I also want to mention that we have a very fresh opportunity here. We can start fresh with renewed energy on the CNR, as the Jefferson County looks for a new director, and as unfortunately several resignations have been tendered, there are now vacancies on the CNR for more residents to join. We have now opened this to a broader community discussion. Many folks have spoken tonight that were not formally aware of the CNR's existence at all. We've given the issue the time, the focus, and the energy that it deserves, and there's a great opportunity for a new direction in front of us. Thank you.
Counselor Hatt.
Yes. So this resolution was brought forward by residents. I was elected to represent our residents, and I have got, we've gotten lots of emails over the last couple weeks. I have talked to residents on the phone, and they're frustrated. And I understand why they're frustrated. They have, they feel like they have not been listened to. And when they suspect that they're not being listened to, and then the director makes comments saying, I keep hearing, it's a seat at the table. Is it a seat at the table when Director Anzlo says, nothing happens. It makes people feel good. What that does is it, it ruins any trust that our residents have with government. They already had trouble trusting that anything was happening, and then what they already felt was they were told they were correct by Director Anzlo. He said that he wanted municipalities to continue to waste their time and money. When the director says it's a waste of time and money, when he says nothing feels good, it just, or nothing happens, it just makes people feel good, and residents are saying this is what they want, that, that's what I was elected for. I am here at the end of the day to represent our residents. And if we are going to, if we leave the roundtable, if we are ever going to come back, there needs to be some trust that is rebuilt. There is no trust, our residents do not trust the process. Why would anybody continue in a process that they have absolutely no faith or trust in? And by Director Anzlo's comments, he's saying that they were acting in bad faith. Why would you go back somewhere where the director himself admitted that they are acting in bad faith? And so I will be voting yes tonight to leave, because that is what the residents overwhelmingly have asked. I've heard very few people asked, asked to stay. I've heard many, many more residents asked to leave. And so I will be voting yes tonight.
Mayor Protem.
You know, we've heard a lot of concern for two key items, one being the concern over noise, and then the other one being the concern over the environmental impacts of lead. And I think just to both Counselor Demott's and Counselor Carmelia's points, these are two very different things. They're not exclusive, they, they, well, one is exclusive only to the CNR, but the lead issue, we need to continue to have a conversation about and figure out the right forum for how to start that conversation. Maybe it's internally within our council, and then how do we expand it to start talking to our neighbors? I feel like there's more strength in numbers, again, as, just like the CNR has, to tackle the lead issue and the environmental impacts issue, and to look at ways to potentially move the transition from leaded to unleaded fuels faster. So I, I do want to just emphasize, we do need to have the conversation. We do need to start to talk about that and move that forward. You know, I, I'm very sensitive to that. I, I lived in a, I bought a condo right next to a highway, and then we were told that the particulate would be filtered out by our, by the air filtration system that they had. It was not the small fine particles, once I learned that later, were still coming through the air filtration system. My son now has asthma as a result from us living there. I feel very guilty over that experience. And I can understand the other parents, the other families that are living in this area feeling the same guilt. And I feel like sometimes, when there are issues like this, and it's the community kind of grassroots coming up with data, they're not heard. And we kind of, I think our, our communal societal tendency is to kind of turn away from this kind of information, because it's not coming from the authorities. And I don't think the FAA or the EPA is doing us any service on this issue. So I think we need to take a stand on that. Regarding the CNR, I am a strong believer in working with our neighbors, and working with other communities, and with Jefferson County and RMMA to try and make some improvements, to make some, you know, even if they are baby steps, we can take these steps and talk about, you know, if we had forty-seven percent uptake on these new routes, well, how, how might we incentivize more uptake on this? Because we're not doing anything other than, hey, there's a route there. Would you mind taking it? Is there something else that we can do to build on the success or to encourage the success? So that's the kind of conversation I would love to have with our neighbors and fellow jurisdictions in the CNR. I don't want to, you know, give up on it entirely. I know there's a lot of frustration, but I feel like what we can do there is make some progress and potentially see what other additional progress can be made to not give up on that. So I will be voting no on this, but certainly be pushing with my other counselors to have additional conversations about how we can change the dynamic here.
Counselor Ireland.
I agree totally with Counselor Hatt. I am voting for the people. That's why I was elected, and I will be voting yes.
I just want to share what city manager and I have been doing behind the scenes, because the lead issue has been very frustrating for us. And we call CDPE, and we're lucky if they answer the phone, and they just will not have a meeting with us. We went to the next step, and that's who is some of their, of CDPH's bosses, and had a conversation. And CDPE called us and finally said they would come out. We even offered a regional meeting with them, so they didn't have to go from community to community. So that's how the March fourth meeting came about. We have been talking with our congressional people, and you do too, because that's where some of these decisions are, are landing. And Congressman Pedersen, and I was glad her representative was here tonight, has worked with us at her first town hall meeting that she used Westview. It was the third question that came up. She understands it. She knows about it. She's taken the lead issue to where she needs to take it to try to get it sooner than later. So we've been working with the right people at the right places, and your voices at the right places can help escalate some of that. Along, with the scandal, I, I don't control what anybody says at this dius, let alone what somebody says from another entity. And when he said it, I have no idea. It doesn't matter. The minute that the scandal happened, the commissioners and county administration knew about it. They dealt with it. They dealt with this swiftly, and we're not dealing with that person anymore. So I will be voting no against this, because I work with this whole team on some other major regional issues, and I just know what it means to have a voice at the table and representing our constituents. Otherwise, I don't know where these, where the voices will go. So we have to keep them at the right place, because everybody does something a little bit different. And we do need to find a way for our citizens that have questions to get us their questions that they want asked at that study session. At least it is a first step of them coming out here and having a conversation. And I appreciate that they're at least stepping up to finally have that conversation and answer their telephone.
Counselor Azadi.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say that, you know, the reason why I called this to a vote tonight, I mean, all the folks who came out today, whoever's listening online, you see that we had a conversation, right? This is probably the most, the most in-depth conversation we've had on this topic. It's gone, you've heard all sides to this topic, and you do have a voice. And I am deeply sorry to all the residents who made comments, who have been struggling with this for years and years, that you feel this distrust in government, that you feel you're not heard, that you feel you're not represented. But just wanted to re, to reiterate the sentiment of what you mostly heard up here today is that we do care. Unfortunately, this vote won't go the right way. Unfortunately, this vote won't go the right way, but the conversation has started. And a lot of eyes are on this right now, not just in this council, but in other councils. I've spoken to, I've heard from a lot of different councils over the last few months and media and neighborhoods and so many folks are looking at this. And I think when you have that happen, that's when real change starts to occur. So don't lose hope, this is just one vote. We do have this opportunity like Councilor Carmella said, Carmelia, sorry, said. There is a path here, right? There is, half the board needs to be reappointed, rehired. That could lead to some fresh blood. A new director of the airport can lead to some fresh blood. So I'm sorry, but this was, so I'm hoping you can see the glass half full of this, that there will be action and we will be talking more about lead as Mayor Protem said. That's top of mind for me, this lead issue, we won't let this stay for long, so thank you.
Roll call, please.
Mayor McNally?
No.
Mayor Protem Normella?
No.
Councilor Ireland?
Yes.
Councilor Carmelia?
No.
Councilor Demott?
No.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Councilor Hot?
Yes.
The motion fails on a three, four vote.
That brings us to Councilor's Bill Number One. Councilor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to pass Councilor Bill Number One on second reading to approve vacating a portion of West 88th Avenue right of way within the Westminster subdivision.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Councilor's Bill Number One. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
Councilor Ireland?
No.
Councilor Carmelia?
Yes.
Councilor Demott?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Councilor Hot?
Yes.
And Mayor McNally?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six, one vote.
That brings us to Councilor's Bill Number Two. Councilor Demott?
Thank you, Mayor. I moved to pass Councilor Bill Number Two on second reading to approve vacating portions of West 84th Avenue and Lowell Boulevard right of ways within the observatory addition to Westminster subdivision.
Mayor Protem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Councilor's Bill Number Two. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilor Ireland?
No.
Councilor Carmelia?
Yes.
Councilor Demott?
Yes.
Councilor Azadi?
Yes.
Councilor Hot?
Yes.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Normella?
Yes.
The motion passes on a six, one vote.
It is nine nineteen and we have one post meeting, but this meeting is adjourned. Would you have post meeting? City Manager?
Yes, and so Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, tonight we kick off really part of our new counselor orientation and education program. And this is an opportunity for new councilors to learn about specific topics as you get onboarded. But more importantly, for the other councilors to weigh in with, you know, thoughts, comments as part of that onboarding process. Our economic development team is going to kick us off. Economic Development Director Lindsay Kimble will provide the presentation tonight. I told her to purposely keep it big picture. If you have interest in diving into specific aspects of economic development within the city, we can take that, you know, to another study session in the future. For example, I could see a desire to have a conversation about, let's talk about what's going on in the downtown and how the downtown operates or Westminster Station or something like that. But big broad brush, and so I'm going to kick it over to Economic Development Director Kimble. Please go ahead.
Thank you, City Manager Brian Tarrick. And good evening, councilors, Mayor, Mayor Protem. I'm Lindsay Kimble, your Economic Development Director. I have with me tonight our two division managers. Heather Cronenberg is our Acting Economic Vibrancy Manager and Stephanie Trawler, who is our Economic Resilience Manager. You would note on the slide, we would have had Bridger Tomlin with us tonight, but unfortunately he's under the weather. He also is with our team and manages our sustainability program. But I will do my best to cover for Bridger tonight, otherwise we can, of course, get information to you at a later time. Tonight, we are your first city department to provide an overview of our services that we provide to our businesses, our residents and internal city operations. So we do reach mostly outside the organization, but also we do some work internally to be good partners and to help the city. We also are focused on everything, I like to say, around opportunity, prosperity and investment. And here, you know, really quickly, I wanted to start from the beginning. So the International Economic Development Council is our professional organization for economic developers. It's also our certifying body. And they have come up with, I was on the board, I just rolled off a month ago. So we worked hard on creating a definition that everyone could agree to. Can you imagine with 10,000 economic developers, that's, would be hard to do because we all come from very different communities, we all have different challenges, we're all in unique situations, unique economies, unique industries. Excuse me. So, but what I like about this definition are especially some of the key words. Economic well-being, quality of life, jobs and stable tax base. So at the end of the day, these are the common themes in economic development. And every community, as I said, will come up with their own different points depending on where they are in their life cycle and again, what their strengths and their weaknesses are as a community. We also are encouraged to change and tweak this definition. So I will add that in addition to what you see here, what we have found very important for the future of the city of Westminster and its economic development and prosperity is the attraction and retention of private sector investment. And the reason why we say that is because we believe there's no greater validation of a community, of the trajectory of that community than having the private sector invest its own money. And that can be a developer investing in a new office building. It can be a homeowner who believes in the community and wants to stay here and wants to invest in their home. It can be a small business owner wanting to invest in their business and perhaps buy a larger piece of equipment to be more productive. And it can also be a resident, you know, they're investing in themselves and improving themselves. So we want to support that. It's a resident looking at getting a new portable certification so they can work on career lathering and improving themselves. But at the end of the day, we believe the most important thing, most important word probably there for economic development purposes is the word job. It all starts with a job. The job provides people with dignity. It provides a means of support for themselves and their family. And we believe when we're successful in supporting a diverse economy with quality jobs, we're able to support the goals of the city in having stable neighborhoods and families. With that, you'll see the progression here, where that stability of neighborhoods and families provides a safer community and stable tax base. That stable tax base then, walking around the circle, allows us to invest and have wonderful amenities for our residents and be able to afford things like beautiful parks and open spaces and well-maintained infrastructure. So again, from just an economic development perspective, we see that the job, the singular job, helping somebody find the job, connect with the job, keep the job, is at the end of the day, the very, very essence of economic development. So overlapping themes, and again, getting into how Westminster is unique and how our economic development is special. We have these themes. And our department does have two divisions, but we all work so closely together. We're all interacting and woven together on projects and forming teams and reforming teams and collaborating with our partners within the city. And I would tell you, every single department we touch almost every day with one of the projects we're working on because it's so interdisciplinary and so holistic in our thinking of economic development. We also have a lot of community partners that are very important, so we're not out here doing it alone. We definitely need those partners. And those are people like the Westminster Chamber, the Jeffco EDC, the Adams County Regional Economic Partnership, the Metro Denver Economic Partnership, other partners like our school systems. We work very closely with them. We also work closely with our Small Business Administration, Small Business Development Center of the North Metro area to provide small business training and opportunities. So, you know, it takes all these, all these folks. And these overlapping themes reflect that, again, that interdisciplinary nature of economic development. And they definitely guide us as we develop our work plan. And as we look through each one of these, so business recruitment, expansion and retention. This is a big one. This is, some people in other communities will say this is the only thing economic development is. Again, we have a bigger view, but this is where we're going out and we're looking to support our targeted industries. Or you'll also hear some folks call them primary industries. Those are industries like aerospace, bioscience, those big headline grabbers when they come to town or when they choose your community that we fight really hard for. We also fight hard to retain them. These industries are important because they diversify us. So you want to always have a diverse portfolio of companies and industries so that you're cushioned from some of those shocks in the economy. You don't want to be a one industry location. You know, we see a lot of examples where that has really not gone well. Think of the Rust Belt, anywhere in there as an example. But we also need these industries because they bring money from outside of the community into the community. So you think about a company like Ball Aerospace or Ball or Trimble or Maxar, you know, some of our largest employers. They're selling goods or services to people outside of our community, outside of our country sometimes. And all of that, the money comes back to our community, a lot of it does, in the form of salaries which then are spent in the community and strengthened in the community. And being spent, so this other side of the coin is, we also try to support our small businesses in that theme of business recruitment and expansion and retention. We are trying to support them because these are what make our community authentic. They're our local serving small businesses, they're your hairdresser, your accountant, your restaurant, your coffee shop. Businesses like that, they're serving the local community and it really gives us character. So that's the other side of the coin. You can't just be in a community of big targeted industries, that would be unbalanced. You also can't just be You also can't just be cut off from the world and be just selling two goods or services between each other and never bringing some new money in and expanding the pot, so to say. So, that in a nutshell is that one. We also have balanced housing as very important to us, because some of the major issues right now in recruitment and in, for small businesses as well, where are my employees going to live? Even with major industries paying six figures, they're asking, we're not convinced that our people can afford to buy a house. And, when you're trying to move a company from, you know, a Texas or a North Carolina or somewhere like that, where there definitely is a lower cost of housing, it's a hard pitch for us, even, again, in some of those six-figure industries. Now, scale that down to our small businesses, and they're trying to find folks entry-level positions, it's very hard. So, balanced housing has become an economic development issue for that matter, that we need to have a place where all of the jobs, housing is where jobs have a home, that's what our demographer always says, and I think that's a great saying. So, jobs have to have a place to live too, and the jobs live in housing. The next theme there, very, very important, redevelopment and reinvestment. We are at a point in the development of our city where we all know that there's very little vacant land. We also are at that inflection point where we have to start changing, not just the way that we're doing business internally, but the way that we're thinking about what kind of investment are we trying to attract. So, I'm sure you can think and conjure up, you know, in your mind, any images of a major city where you've been, and you start in the downtown and it moves out into the rings of the suburbs and suburban neighborhoods. So, we're a first ring, first-tier suburb. We're a very high-quality, high-aesthetic, very nice first-ring suburb. We want to keep it that way. We keep it that way by, as I said at the beginning, constantly having that lifeblood of new investments from private sector, from helping to have jobs, so our residents have the money to invest in their own properties and their own homes. And it's that cycle of, you know, we can't continue to find our way through growth because there isn't enough land, we don't have enough vacant land anymore. So, we're going to have to start thinking about how do we reuse carefully, how do we use what we have, how do we maintain the nice, the nice things that we have? And, an analogy that I always make, that I use, and my staff is tired of hearing me say it, but, you know, I think about when I had a house that was 100 years old, and I think about all the people that lived there before me, and I imagine in the twenties and the teens, you know, it was a hop in place and it was new, and that knob and tube wiring was state-of-the-art, and, you know, it was beautiful. But eventually, somebody had to make investments to keep it nice and to keep it from becoming a blighted home, you know, an ablated neighborhood. And some of that did happen in that neighborhood during the 60s and 70s, like a lot of other communities, first-ring suburbs again. But, my point is, if somebody hadn't kept investing and adding the HVAC and making sure the roof didn't have a hole in it, and continuing to set aside money and having a sinking fund so you knew that you could reinvest in yourself, I probably wouldn't have been able to live in that house, and that neighborhood probably wouldn't have been on the historic registry and wouldn't have, you know, been a wonderful place to live, and that little bungalow, you know, wouldn't have been able to be a home. So, I think about, you know, on a larger scale, that's where a lot of cities are right now, is that, you know, in the 70s and 80s, we were blowing and going, but now, you know, it's not a bad thing, we just have to change how we're doing, how we're doing business and what kind of investment. So, that's a little bit of redevelopment, and we could go on for hours on that subject. Then the last one there is creation and maintenance of a high-quality community. So, again, going back to, I think of all of the good work and, you know, the shoulders that we're standing on of how Westminster got to where it is and how beautiful it is, how well-planned it is, all of that really hard work. You know, we're almost in a caretaker role, you know, we're not going to make any of those big sweeping decisions about roadways or interchanges, really probably not have that opportunity again, but what we have are wonderful bones and a wonderful framework, and we need to make sure that we maintain that high-quality community. And, you know, just for examples, we do that in economic development through helping folks stay in their homes. We have various programs that we'll talk more in detail about, but we do that by working with our partners in PRL on placemaking initiatives, supporting the arts, supporting our school system, and doing everything that we can to activate and draw people to our community, because, you know, the money that outsiders spend in our community is earned sales tax money for us, and that's a great thing. So, you know, the Promenade was an amazing idea, and the history of that is amazing, I won't get into it, but the Orchard, amazing history there, and foresight to invest and be able to have those generators of sales tax where we're really pulling from the whole region and we're able to charge our city and help fund our city. So, kudos. And, very quickly, we'll just run through some of those topics here. We have business retention, recruitment, expansion. Again, we're focused on industries, so how are these target industries picked? The short story is that we work with our partners regionally and statewide Colorado Economic Development to determine what industries demonstrate the greatest propensity for growth, high wages, opportunity, and staying power. So, and also cross-section that with who's already here, what are those clusters that we can build upon? Obviously, life sciences, aerospace, financial services, we have a lot of strength in that, especially along the US 36 corridor. So, those are industries that we actively seek out, and how do we do that? We respond to requests for information from different prospects. Those might come through our partners at the EDC, the Economic Development Corporation at the state level, could come as a direct contact to us, but we generally have a short turnaround time, we respond to those various customer requests for information. Stephanie and her team do a wonderful job doing that. And, we also go out and proactively participate in missions, so there'll be either inbound or outbound missions, and we will target certain cities, certain sectors, sectors in cities where we've had success. And we try to actively recruit people to the community. We also do a lot with retention, we do retention visits, so going and visiting with those CEOs, going and asking them, what's been your experience, what can we do to help you? There's so much value in making those personal connections and learning from our businesses that there really is no substitute for making those connections. Yeah, of course, things like Business Appreciation Month that we invite everybody to participate in, and we also conduct a bi-annual business survey and market research to help drive decisions and to also help us when we're responding to those requests for information. Small business and entrepreneur support, we have a, just a fantastic small business team. Again, we partner extensively with the SBDC and the Chamber, but internally, we're managing several different small business grant and scholarship programs to help them grow and maintain current skill levels. Business trainings are offered with our partners that are listed there and other partners. It really can range from, you know, a very popular one, how to do business with the city, how to get started, to marketing, social media, and we also have very timely business concerns. We've partnered with PRL and with the PD to provide training or information on homelessness and what, you know, what actions can a business take. We also have had the Legacy Awards, which all of those pictures on that slide are from, but we do that every October, and it's really an amazing opportunity to honor businesses who have been here for extensive periods of time. And I think, last time, we did in October, it was 45 years, 50 years, was our longest running business. So, we run it in five-year increments and honor all of those businesses who have been in our community, and we also honor those who have done outstanding community service or support for nonprofits in the community, and we also honor those, as well as companies who have made extraordinary strides in sustainability through either our Sage Program that we'll talk more about in a little bit, but also in any sort of efficiencies that they've developed related to sustainability. Balanced housing, we've talked about this, but I wanted to point out that proposition 123 funding opportunities has been incredibly successful, I think it was four times oversubscribed this first round. So, that's a good thing and a bad thing, but good news is, we were one of the first cities to be accepted into the program, so we're proud of that. We worked really quickly to get our letter of intent in and get us participating in that program. Also around, you know, balanced housing, it's not just 30%, 60% of area median income, but, you know, we're also talking about 120%. We're also working on projects that might be an on-ramp that maybe are a little over 120, but are something in that what we call missing middle housing, maybe it's for-sale townhomes or, you know, attached units or paired homes. So, we're always looking at different ways that we can help fund the gaps in that, and we'll be coming back to you shortly, in the next month or two, we're going to be back with you at a study session to present the most recent Housing Needs Assessment that's done every five years. So, we will be coming back with that, and that will cover the gamut of housing types and affordability and form. One note quickly on form is that we have been working very closely with community development to try and understand how can we look into this, maybe those more creative types of housing, tiny home developments, or, you know, the ADU conversation, all of that, maybe prefab homes that don't look like they're prefab but are a lot less expensive and a lot faster to assemble, and once they're assembled in the factory and just trucked over and assembled on-site. So, there's a lot of different creative ideas that we've been actively participating in, and we've been taking field trips, if you will, to visit, you know, developers of prefab homes and looking at tiny home communities and what other kind of ways can we help support different housing types. Okay, so, CDBG is a major part of our efforts so far to increase and preserve affordable housing. This is a formulae grant from HUD, the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. The city gets approximately $600,000 a year, it varies a little bit, because it is a formula based on what they're allocated and other factors. But, one of our most popular programs, and I want to make sure you're aware of, because it may be of interest to constituents, is this Emergency and Essential Home Repair Program. It's income-qualified, but it helps people to stay in their homes and, again, preserve that affordable housing. So, a good example is, you know, a picture there, you see a nice couple are able to stay in their home because we were able to add a ramp onto the house. Sometimes it's little things like that, sometimes it's grab bars added to the shower, lowering of countertops for people, whatever helps make their home more accessible, because there's also a saying in affordable housing, in balanced housing, that the most affordable housing is the stock that already exists, and helping people stay in those homes as long as they can. Excuse me. We also have a new program we launched last year, Housing Lift, which I want to make sure you're aware of. This is a capital project grant for our multifamily affordable products in the city. It helps them do major capital improvements, and again, preserve our housing stock, allow people to stay in those units. For example, one project, it was re-roofing a major multifamily product, so that allowed, obviously allowed a lot of people to stay in those homes. One, it was replacing outdated windows, helping to improve sidewalks that were cracked. So, it's projects like that. Also, we work, we have some program money set aside to do affordable housing site prep, so that's leveling, grading, doing some environmental studies and things like that. And we also, in this current plan, have infrastructure, streetscape, pedestrian improvements that we've done in some of pre-qualified census tract areas. So, there's a lot more to CDBG, but that's a very high level. Also, with our federal plans comes what we call the Private Activity Bonds, and we're allocated about $7 million a year. We generally will designate our city allocation to go to CHAFAs, so the Colorado Affordable Housing Partners at the statewide level, and that's because CHAFA has a great program that they're able to help first-time homebuyers or low-income homebuyers with mortgage assistance, buying down interest rates, or just helping them with some general homeowner, homebuyer education programs to help them get in the right posture to purchase that home for the first time. So, that's really a great program, and we also have about $700,000 in federal home funds, so we are part of a consortium. We've collaborated with cities and we're in the Adams County Consortium, so we're able to use these programs, these program dollars, for affordable housing projects in our community. Basically, that consortium allows us to relieve ourselves and our very small staff of a lot of the paperwork burden associated with some federal programs. So, we work together, and Adams County has a nice staff that does the paperwork, and we are able to use the dollars in our community and draw those down. This year, really exciting, so we're going to begin the process of the city's, planning for the city's next five-year consolidated plan. I won't get you in the weeds, but this plan with HUD is very important, because this five-year plan and all of the community outreach to build this plan will dictate what we're allowed to do in each one of those years. So, we have an annual action plan that we put together every single year, and you'll see Stephanie and her team will be coming forward in early summer to start talking about that, start doing community meetings. But what we do is we have to always tie back to that consolidated plan. You know, it's not impossible to amend it, but I will tell you, all things with HUD, it's a process, so it takes quite a few months to amend anything. So, we like to get the consolidated plan right the first time, and we're able to move forward. So, that's an exciting project coming your way as well. Redevelopment and reinvestment, I've said a lot about this, because I'm really passionate about it. But, we, you know, we're working on primarily in our downtown area, the TOD, we've got other areas of focus throughout the city, the focus areas, and those are enumerated in the comp plan. So, you have areas that are in areas of change. So, it's where either we're thinking disinvestment has happened, might happen, you know, already is going, we want to focus on those areas, and as I said, help create some tools and some potential better supports to help redevelopment occur in those areas. And it could be anything from outdated obsolete office buildings being converted potentially to affordable housing, it could be something like strip centers in certain areas of our community that are tired, again, need a refresh, need some new thinking around them to keep that investment going and to keep our retail healthy. So, there's a lot of different strategies that can be employed with redevelopment and reinvestment and adaptive reuse, definitely in that bucket. But, what we want to share is that we will be coming back with periodic updates on where we are with that redevelopment and adaptive reuse toolkit that we're trying to use, excuse me, to encourage our private sector investment. Also, we wanted to share with you on this slide, our team also oversees inventory of city-owned developable property or strategic properties. So, these are properties like Schoenberg Farms, Holly Park, the large parcel at Westminster and 104th over by the Weston and Promenade area. Also, recently, you know, we've completed our major role in the project, but Heather led the effort and helped with the Sharon and Green repurposing and adaptive reuse project there, which ultimately, you know, this body chose to have the expansion of the Stratford Park. So, there's things like that, where the city also has general, I like to call them corporate real estate needs, where it's just, you know, hey, we need to find a site, so lease for XYZ, can you help us? So, we're also the real estate expertise on staff, Heather, that can help with those sorts of things, you know, negotiating those transactions. Also, we have strategic retail plans, so we need to do a retail study. Um, also we have, um, strategic retail plans. So we did do a, a retail study about a year and a half ago, two years ago, which we still are acting on and acting on those recommendations in the retail study. So a lot going on in, uh, redevelopment and, uh, retail and, um, real estate. So stay tuned. We also have our focused areas. Um, these are downtown Westminster Station. Just another example, the Promenade or slash Church Ranch area. Um, these are our three major examples, but there's also the North Huron area. Got a lot of activity going on there with Novara, Foster's Farm. Uh, we also have, um, the Brook Hill Retail area over on Wads and of course, historic Westminster in general, looking at encouraging development investment in that area. Excuse me. Um, so, so what role do we play in these focused areas? We generally are quarterbacking, I like to say. We are coordinating multiple departments throughout the city. Um, economic development's a pretty small team, so we cannot do it alone. Um, a lot of this work, it's, it's PRL, it's Public Works. Um, it's our, our, you know, all kinds of different teams at the city that are helping us, community development, to get these projects where they are. Um, and each one of these areas in particular, we could probably spend a whole, um, study session on. So I won't, I won't belabor any one of them. We're happy to answer any questions. Um, but again, it's about coordination, uh, reinvestments. I know, um, everyone's pretty familiar with downtown Westminster, but we are coming back in, um, late quarter two to provide our annual updates. That'll be a whole, uh, study session on downtown. And we also walk through the financial model and some updates on development. We also have, uh, Westminster Station, which, um, thank you, um, a lot of you who were on council at the time were very helpful in getting Excel to provide the correct amount of power to Westminster Station, which is critical. Uh, we have invested quite a bit along with our partners at RTD to have a really, a real transit-oriented development there. And, um, without the power, we, we literally had a developer have to turn a crane around coming towards the site for the groundbreaking because we found out at the last minute that their Excel said, well, really don't have enough power. And it took a lot of, um, a lot of lobbying and we're very thankful to everyone who helped us with that. But we've got the power, continuing to work with Lux Living on that project and we're hoping for a groundbreaking this year on that. We also have some other exciting projects. We might, uh, hopefully will be coming to you in late February or March for that area. Promenade, um, y'all are probably familiar with, um, that, the founted area there and the ponds and, and the big open site that we have there at a hundred and fourth and, and, uh, Westminster Boulevard. So, um, we're working with our friends at PRL and Public Works to understand how can we help with the redevelopment of the Promenade area? Again, that's an area, especially where those ponds are right now and the pump house and so forth, that really need, um, some redevelopment and need a refresh. So we're working with the Weston, working with Promenade, working with the owners, um, there of the retail and some of the multifamily sites there and trying to work with them on a, a plan for the Promenade area. Um, and finally, sustainability. I'll do my best, um, Bridger standard impression, but, uh, he is our amazing, uh, sustainability administrator. Um, in a nutshell, our sustainability office is really focused on identifying and championing initiatives that save the city and the Westminster community. Those are businesses, our residents, saving them money, um, reducing the use of resources in general, um, to improve the quality of life, help us be a more resilient community. Um, so we've got some really cool programs that we're operating, uh, with a very small team and it's been an amazing area, especially over the past year, where we've been able to get a lot of grant money from the state, from the federal government. We've had great partnerships, um, for example, the Urban Forest Growth Program with PRL, able to provide, um, and reinstate some of the tree canopy in some of our lower income neighborhoods. Not just install the tree, but help with, um, a couple of years of the, the care and maintenance to make sure that that tree is healthy. We also, um, have the Sage Business Program, which has been really popular with our businesses. We provide one-on-one assistance to help them understand how they can, again, it's about saving money, not creating a burden, but helping to educate, helping connect them with different programs so that they can save money. And, and at the same time, triple bottom line, also being more sustainable and helping our community and the environment. So we've been, um, very happy with those results there. We also have a program where we've been working with neighborhoods. That's the Connect Neighborhoods Program that you see there, where, um, Bridger and his team have been able to go out and visit with HOAs or just community groups, it can have to be an HOA, and talking with them about water-wise initiatives, recycling initiatives, composting, all kinds of subjects. Really any question that those neighborhood groups would have. I think, um, we, we, Bridger has been asked it and, uh, we have worked to try and help those neighborhoods. So that's been a very popular program as well. And again, on the theme of helping our entire city operations, um, Bridger and his team are also working to, um, help with energy savings throughout the entire city facilities. Um, there's a lot of opportunity there and, um, also on different aspects of, um, recycling. So last year we instituted a common standard recycling bins and program for all city facilities. That was a big win. And, you know, it helps us just continue to be a leader, um, in that subject and to be a good example. Um, so with that, um, that is the end of our presentation. We are happy to answer any questions that you may have on any of the topics. Thank you.
I'm curious, I, and it jogged my memory seeing some of these photos from, uh, TOD, um, just the art. So specifically, my thought went to the Medusa group that was down there. And just my thought is, it's not specifically to them, but they're what made me think of it. What kind of like, um, outreach do we do to failed businesses to see if there were any roadblocks that the city had that might help them, uh, stayed in business or programs that we could have offered? Um, granted, you know, the market is the market and things are going to fail, but if there are opportunities, is that something that your team is, is doing?
Yeah, that, um, great question. Um, let me start. I'll actually address Medusa because that was one that was pretty heartbreaking for us. If you're familiar with Medusa Collective, amazing group of artists in the TOD area, um, female artists. They, um, were all very, very involved in any of those burrows that you see, um, in the TOD area and throughout the city. Um, we actually went and did an exit interview, if you will, with Medusa Collective because we really wanted to find out what happened. Is there anything that we could, is there anything we could do to keep you here? Is it not too late? Um, so we did go and visit them personally. Um, and, you know, it, it was the business model. Uh, they also had another operation going in Denver, I believe. Um, the main principal also ran, uh, Tattoo Parlour, which was where she was making most of her money. And, you know, that's, um, that's the way business is sometimes and that side of the business was not as profitable. So, um, in that instance, it's, you know, as you mentioned, sometimes there's nothing we can do. Um, but Stephanie, another example.
I was just going to add to that specific. One of the, there's a couple of members from the Medusa Collective that we are still working with, um, to find the appropriate site that they can afford and working through our technical assistance and our grant programs. It's a little slow moving. Um, but we, we are still in contact with several members of the Medusa Collective still and supporting them as we can.
Well, it's cool in general that you do that. That one I thought was interesting to me because there, once upon a time, it was very not accepted to do a tattoo shop here, which even after I was on council, which I always thought was fun to poke fun at, no offense to staff, but, um, I was excited to see that that kind of thing was in, in town. Um, actually, as far back as before I even got elected, in twenty thirteen, when they used to have the Orchard Festival, I was going to pay for my tattoo artist to have a booth there and I was promptly told that that would not be allowed. So, um, really bummed him out because he was excited about it. I think mostly because I was going to pay his booth fee, but, um... But anyway, I think that that's good that we do that because I do think that that's probably a good opportunity to see, you know, why aren't they not succeeding? And it could be a variety of reasons, but, you know, it's a good opportunity for us to look for trends to see if there's any, you know, additional things that, you know, maybe they didn't even know about. Because I know that's, I think people, usually small business owners, they're trying to figure out how you start a business, let alone whether or not there's local grants and stuff that they could participate in, so.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I'll go ahead.
Uh, I'll go ahead for the question. Um, I would love to see at some point, um, a little bit more of a deeper dive on our permitting process for businesses, especially for really small brand new businesses and what that looks like. Um, and, you know, find out if there are any efficiencies that we can create or, um, any marketing tools that we can put out into the community to let folks know that there is help if they need it, if they reach out directly to staff, just know a little bit about what that looks like. Because I've, I've talked to some residents myself who have been trying to get started and they've faced some difficulties with it. So I'd love to take a look at that.
Um, I could give you a really high-step, we trawler, I mean, I could give you a really high-level response right now. So we do partner, we try to reach, um, our, our micro businesses. Um, they're a hard, hard market to reach, um, and to connect with sometimes. But we work with our city clerk's office who, um, who really starts the licensing and we help remove any roadblocks we can. We help, uh, if we can get to them at those early stages and they are brick and mortar, we will help them with site selection. We will help them with, um, navigating the, the city processes. We will put them in touch with the Small Business Development Center or the SBDC, which we put them in kind of a, a boot camp, if you will, um, and where they learn everything, soup to nuts, how to own a business plan, funding sources, financing. And then we come back and we try to support them with grants once they do get to that brick and mortar stage. So, um, there, we're a small staff. Um, we do try our best to reach out. We have normal communications. But if you have any residents who are interested, please let me know and I'll, I'll be sure to follow up with them as well.
Thank you. And then I have a quick follow-up is, um, we talked about training that you provide for the public, which is, um, there are some different classes. Are those regularly scheduled? Because I asked a few small businesses, what could we as the city do to make your life easier? And they said, training or financial development or, you know, how to get off the ground and keep off the ground and stuff like that. And so it sounds like we do it. Um, so again, how do I?
We do it. We, we don't have this year's, um, calendar fully vetted yet. Um, lots of moving pieces and our, our participation dropped last year. All of our existing training is recorded and available on the, the, not the, the economic development website. And it ranges from marketing, um, social media, um, finances, um, and, and kind of those broader business topics. And then we even do very specific, um, citywide trainings, like how to open a business or, uh, knowing your property rights with homelessness. We've even done, um, irrigation, uh, how to, how to reduce your, your watershed and your, how to, how to water-wise, or excuse me, yeah, water-wise, um, your irrigation for some of the larger property owners. Um, we, we will be going out to a survey and asking this question again, what types of training you would like to see? Um, and additionally, we provide scholarships. So we will, we will, we will buy seats, um, at the SBDC's, uh, marketing boot camp, the Leading Edge as well. Again, getting those folks the right tools that they need from the start.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
If I could just highlight, um, you know, I think it's important that if you hear something or someone's having difficulty, if you can just give us a name and a number or an email where we can make contact with that individual. You know, so often folks just don't know what's available. They don't know how to necessarily access the information. And, you know, if you give us a name and some contact information, we can reach out.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you ever actively recruit certain retail establishments, like a Trader Joe's or a Cosmos, McDonald's, Cosmos? That's the big thing now.
We see the Trader Joe's.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. I will turn that over to Stephanie.
Yeah, so Trader Joe's, uh, has been a buzz, uh, over like the last six months. Every community is actively pursuing Trader Joe's. Um, uh, they're very tight-lipped. Um, we are working with a, a few developers who are working with developers who are working. It's all very hush-hush. But yes, we actively work on a variety of restaurants, active recruitments. Um, sometimes they come to us, sometimes we go to them if we know we can catch a lead. A good example is Aldi. I think City Manager Freitag, uh, said this and said, hey, we want an Aldi. So our team went out and started, uh, to reaching out to their, to their retail staff and to their, to their regional managers to see what we could do, to see if we can, um, matchmake at low occasion.
I know the people will wait for hours in line for a Cosmos, so big retail dollars.
Yes, that is a great chain.
We are, um, and, and Novara, which is formerly Foster Farms. We are working actively right now on a variety of different prospects, some of them, like, I'm not at liberty to speak about, but there's some really exciting, um, projects that if we can get them through the pipeline, pipeline will be, will be, will be fun for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so, quick question on employees. How many totals in your department?
In the department, um, fourteen point five. Um, we gained last year, uh, sustainability. So we grew by, not grew by, but, you know, we had thirteen point five when we gained sustainability from CMO office. That made us fourteen point five.
Okay. So, I mean, you're doing a lot with that much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
My question is related to startups. So this is close to my heart. So I've, before politics, I was a serial entrepreneur, right? Where, you know, you just get that bug and you just, it, it never leaves you to start something new. There are so many young people who are post-college, pre, you know, pre-career looking to start a business. They don't know how, they're figuring it out on their own. But at the same time, there, what's happening is there are millions of jobs, right? And eighty percent of these small, of, of small businesses are, and eighty percent of them or so are owned by baby boomers. And a lot of baby boomers are retiring over the next several years. So there's this little but growing movement of how do we connect folks who are looking to start a business with baby boomers? Because only ten percent of them, so when they're surveyed, only ten percent are actually planning on selling. And these are profitable, small businesses, right? But they just don't have the energy or the time or the, you know, or thinking about it. So they just shut down a profitable business. So I'm curious if you guys are tracking, or if you can, start looking into, how do we connect the dots, right? Connect those potential entrepreneurs with folks who are looking to retire and, so.
Um, you know, cou- couple thoughts. Um, this is how, a cou- there's been a couple of opportunities where I've actually been able to be the matchmaker. Again, it's knowledge is power. If I know that there is a match, then I will do my best.
Match.com?
Sure. Match.com. So there are a couple of different, um, Transworld is the first one that comes to mind. Business brokers that, uh, if there are young entrepreneurs, you can put in the filters of the types of businesses you want to buy and that, and then, and then you actually work through a broker to, to do that because it, it's really hard to matchmake and the timing of it all. Uh, I think it would probably exhaust what we can do in our team. But there are services, there are business brokers out there. And if, if I, if there is a match, I will try to, I would push, um, businesses that way. Um, because that's a cleaner way and then we wouldn't get in the middle of a private transaction, which we try to avoid as well.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Is there's a place that the people that own the business that want to out, because they're retiring? Is there a place they can advertise that?
Um, uh, again, I would go through a business broker to do that. Um, if, if we are aware of it, we could probably put out some...
Can you tell us who the business brokers are?
Uh, one, one would be, one, one that comes to mind is Transworld Business.
Transworld Business.
They're, they're a pretty popular one in the front range and I can't think of the other business. There's another business broker. Like, the name escapes me right now.
You know how much they charge to do something like that?
Uh, it's, no, it's, it's, well, I, I can tell you a little bit because I actually just bought a business through, um, a, a Transworld. Um, so again, you have to, it, it's the matchmaking. Uh, as the buyer, I did not have to pay any of the brokerage fee. The seller paid, I think, four thousand dollars. So it's a pretty minimal cost and it's really absorbed in the transaction, just like it would be with a real estate transaction. It kind of comes out of the profits and it goes to the broker who helped the deal, put, put the deal together. And, you know, it's, it's, uh, the gamut of the deal structures i- is very, very, very sophisticated to really big businesses that maybe have DOE contracts to very simple, you know, flower shops.
So I think the elevation of that, of, of their, the, of awareness... So I think the elevation of that, of the, the awareness building of that resource, right? For both sides, I think could be something we, sorry, we pour fuel on.
Yeah, that's a great, thank you.
Um, I was just gonna say, um, as just an overall comment for any of our sessions, for other, for departments. I would love to hear in the, during the presentation, we all love you, um, Director Kimball. But you know, we have great expertise with the managers that are sitting here. And it's a shame that they're sitting there not presenting and sharing their expertise. I know, you know, there's a little bit of back and forth with questions, but um, you know, we have a lot of depth. And I'd really love to um, have our staff showcase that for our, our counselors. So they understand the knowledge that we have. And um, we can't really do that if we're just hearing from one person um, in each of these sessions. So just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Counselor Hart, did you raise your hand?
No.
You raised your.
I did. Um, I think we've said it a little bit, but I, I'd love to double down on the awareness piece. Um, because there's so much here that I feel like I'm a pretty involved resident. And yet I, I don't know how to answer these questions for residents and then you have it. And I don't know we said that, but I'd love to delve into that, okay? If a resident walks in here with a business question, do they walk into city hall at that? You know, I know that most things are online, but we've had some discussions about the website as well, which is for another time. But um, anyway, I'd love to figure out how we can close some of those gaps. Like, can they walk up to that desk and ask like, who do I talk to? I don't even know if they can, um, you know, and so.
I would, the answer is yes, they can.
Can, okay, awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I just, um, I think, yeah, if we can make that more well-known. That, hey, our city is a town hall and it's also gonna help you with everything you need around housing and business. And how do we get that out there? Marketing.
Thank you.
All right, I'm sorry, Counselor.
I will say um, that I have two registered businesses in the city. And I will tell you that once you get in the registered for your taxes with the city that the.
They reach you.
Well, the emails that they put out from there, there have been a couple of times where I've heard about things in the email, from the business email before I have as a councilperson. So I feel like, and I know I heard that from former Councilor Seymour a couple of times too. So I feel like that part is, like, the communication, as soon as you get plugged in, is, is, is pretty good. The, I also, and you know, this isn't necessarily you guys, but I mean, it benefits the small businesses. The new, and it seems like other, other cities are doing the same one, cause like with Tax Portal, I think it's the same one that we use. And it is so much easier to use, in my opinion, than the old one. So I'm, you know, from a, trying to figure out, especially if you're doing uh, multiple cities. It's so much better to have to file taxes through them.
We've heard positive responses across the board. G U N Tax is the new, the name of the new system. And it's um, really been.
Yes.
Much more user friendly.
Yes.
And your programs with S B, um, the small business folks, um, Made and Created has used them and been fantastic. So um, there, you always can learn something from them. And they're, they're always willing to meet with you one-on-one and not charge you. So it's good. What are they called, Gins? They're over at Front Range, or are they still at Front Range?
Hmm, the Small Business Development Center, the S B D C. And we have a, a partner agreement where we, we work specifically, they, you know, with, with Westminster businesses. We kind of underwrite some um, space, if you will, for our, for our businesses and entrepreneurs.
And, and, and if I could just do a plug for the S B D C. In my former um, work home in Hillsborough County, Florida. We oversaw the Small Business Development Center, so I'm very familiar with services. So I, I love seeing their praises. They provide free, no cost, one-on-one consulting with certified business consultants. Again, no charge for business owners. They, they stay with the folks, they're trained uh, very consistently. If you walk into one S B D C in Colorado, they've got um, the same programs, same training, same computer systems. As if you walked into it in New York. Um, so it's very consistent for people. If they've just moved to this community, they can get hooked up with the North Metro S B D C. Then again, Stephanie said, we're a partner with them. But I think some of the most invaluable things are those one-on-one consulting sessions they provide. They also have tremendous resources, databases, all free. Um, so we really try to push people there, cause we're not trying to reinvent the wheel. Um, they're a wonderful partner.
Last thing they did was um, I don't remember what they called it, but you got accepted to the class. And then the first couple of classes you were learning. And then they divided you up into, I think we had four or five in each group. And then, so that was constant through the rest of the class. So you all heard the very first part and then you got into your small groups. And it was just another way to meet, uh, most of these folks are um, through their homes, doing whatever they're doing. And um, just able to let your hair down and say, well, I've been trying this and this doesn't work. And somebody'd say, oh, well, here's what I did. So it, it's just thriving off of each other and helping each other.
Mayor, I think that was the leading edge bootcamp that you went to, yeah?
Yeah, I think so. It was good.
Great.
I do have one more thought that I forgot about till now. Um, the housing needs assessment that was mentioned, I assume that that's the same uh, that was presented about a month ago, so ago to the public? There was like a public forum?
Um, it was, yes, you were at, you were in attendance.
Yes.
Um, we will, we're wrapping that up right now and we will make a formal presentation to this body of March-ish?
Okay, cause I, I was disappointed about that session and I had some real concerns. And I'm hoping that those are kind of met in the meantime and not wait till we see it in March. Which is the numbers, um, I think I was the only current council there, but Baker and Seymour were both present, so we might hear it from them. But um, the numbers around median income were incorrect. The numbers around median house cost in Westminster were incorrect. Um, and there were several folks in the crowd who noticed immediately. And it told me that, how do I know that the rest of the data in there is factual? When those broad numbers were not correct. And unfortunately for the person presenting, um, you know, I don't think he seemed to be sensitive to the difference between us and Denver. And that did not hit home very well. He said, well, it's the same thing. And trust me, that didn't go over well. So um, I would love to make sure that before that comes to us, we really go through those numbers and make it look sharp. Yeah, thanks.
Um, making sure I understand what you're asking. Are you wanting to see a cup, a draft of the H and A in advance of the presentation?
I believe there's a draft available, cause I feel like I skimmed through that already. So I did skim through that. Um, and I just, I just wanna make sure that when we talk about the numbers. Cause I, even in that draft summary, they weren't correct. We used median, median numbers for Denver and it wasn't right. Which was a bit twenty grand over what we are, right? Cause our median income here is about eighty-two thousand and that's pretty well known. And the numbers were about a little over, it was, it was one oh five, I remember, which is not right, so.
We're in the process of fine tuning.
Thank you.
Um, a couple of points.
Thank you. I just don't want that to wait, so, yeah.
I had also heard similar concerns um, from community members and others, so I also.
Oh, interesting, we didn't even talk.
Um, so I would also appreciate us combing through that and making sure it's Westminster specific. Um, that's a, um, and then with that, I know it's a housing needs assessment. But in terms of identifying opportunities and potential strategies to build that a little bit more. It was a little on the weak side and not really using all, all of our tools. And mentioning all of our potential um, financial incentives or other assets that we might be able to throw towards it. So it was very light on, on that. So I'd like to see that strengthened. Um, and um, at some point, I'd like to discuss, you know, whether we adopt it or not. Um, we've done a lot where we accept studies as, as a group. But um, we are gonna be moving into a, um, you know, if, if any of the legislation passes, particularly the smart growth, the strategic growth bill, um, we would have to be adopting these documents. So I want us to be thinking about that.
Tiny homes, tiny homes, tiny homes.
I see no more questions. Thank you so much. Everybody have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.